Good evening and welcome to the November 20, 2019 meeting of the Milton Select Board. We're going to begin with our public hearing regarding tax classification, but before we do that, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. So, our public hearing is on the fiscal year 2020 tax classification, and we are convening this hearing pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts General Laws. We have to make some decisions with respect to the property tax burden to be borne on each class of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal. I believe we have our chief appraiser, Mr. Bushway, with us, and Mr. Cronin as well, and we're going to ask them to come up. Now, this is a public hearing, and we're going to conduct it as a public hearing, and given that, I believe we do notice has been given, in accordance with all statutory requirements, printed information is available, and I believe has been made available, and all persons present for the purpose of this public hearing will have the opportunity to speak. And I'm, as the chair, I'm presiding at the hearing. The procedure is that first, we're going to have the appraiser and the board, a member of the board, Mr. Cronin, present their views, and then we're going to have any statements and may have some questions from the members of this board as well, and then we'll allow any statements and questions from anyone who's here to address this as well. So, any remarks will be addressed to the chair, and then we'll try to get answers and discussions to the extent that we can. So, Mr. Bushway, I think I will turn it over to you for your presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Bob Bushway. I'm proud to be the town's chief appraiser. With me is Chairman Brian Cronin, one of the three-member Board of Assessors. We also have Bob Reitz and Bill Bennett also on the board. So, this evening, we're here to present some options to the Select Board in regards to whether or not we want to continue with a shift, and if we do, what makes the most sense for the town. So, basically, we'll be presenting options in a minute, but I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and go over a little bit about what we do and how we arrive at some of the property values in town. So, we're constantly looking at sales and inspecting properties. We have John Grow, he's our full-time appraisal technician right now. He does a terrific job updating our database, making sure that the values are fair and equitable, interviewing homeowners and determining whether the sales are fair market or not. And so, we do that on an annual basis, and we're constantly reviewing property sales, and that's for single-family houses, that's how you figure out whether or not you want to keep them the same or go up or down. We have people coming into the office all the time, "Why is my value going up? I haven't done a thing to my house, and you raised my value." Okay? It's comparable sales. Everybody, people see that it's all public record, people see what's going on in their neighborhoods, and once you explain the process a little bit, they tend to calm down a little bit. One of the big misconceptions is that the assessors raise property taxes. We don't raise property, we don't raise taxes, we don't lower taxes. Property taxes are a function of the town budget, it's as simple as that. Tax levy goes up, your property taxes are going to go up. So, that's something that a lot of people have a hard time wrapping their head around, but we don't raise taxes. We're trying to get fair values out there, and so people are paying what they should be in relationship to other properties. So, the other mystery is, how do you come up with a tax rate? It seems like this mysterious number. I'll just take a quick minute, if you allow me to, and explain how that rolls out. So, you take the total tax levies, this year it's a little over $85 million, divide that by the total taxable value, which is over $6 billion now, and you multiply that number times 1,000, and you get 13, and this year you'd get 1340, which would be the single tax rate, which is option five in your packet. So, that's a simple mathematical equation. So, how do we get the, how do we come up with the 1312, which is the current shift that we're at? So, you take the 1340 and multiply it times .9789, and that comes up to 1312, as simple as that. How do you come up with the commercial rate of 2010? You take the single tax rate of 1340 and multiply it times 1.5, and you get 2010. I just wanted to kind of crystallize that a little bit, because a lot of people have a hard time with that. So, if the board, our board is, Board of Assessors is recommending the 1 point, staying with the 1.5 shift. If we do, if this board determines that that's the way to go, it'll save the average single-family taxpayer $207 over a single tax rate. So, that's the difference between, that's why the town is at a shift right now. And it's typically, once you start a shift, it's tough to back down into a single tax rate because of burdening the single taxpayer quite a bit, unless you start backing it down slowly. So, that's it in a nutshell. I also want to make everybody aware that there are several tax exemptions for seniors, blind, disabled veterans, a lot of folks in town that are struggling with their property taxes, and we're sensitive to that, I know the board is. We're going to be presenting an article at town meeting in May that'll help further hope increase the tax deferral program. Right now, the interest rate is at 8%. We want to try to back that down to something considerably less than that, to make it a little bit more enticing for people to entertain deferring their property taxes if they meet the certain criterias, it's fairly liberal criteria right now. So, that's a program that we really want to try to push and get behind and help some of the seniors out that really struggle. So, with that, I'll let you guys, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Bushway. Questions, comments from the members?
This is the Council, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to comment that I'm very pleased that you're working on that article, because that was my main question.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
So, this is the calendar year, this will be for 2020.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct, fiscal 2020.
Fiscal 2020 or calendar 2020?
Fiscal 2020. The first two bills are preliminary, the first two bills that went out based on last year's taxes and last year's tax rate, so the bill that goes out at the end of December will reflect the lower tax rate and new value.
Other question, oh, Mr. Wells.
I was going to make a motion.
I just wanted to ask a quick question, Bob, about the, you know, the maximum allowable tax levy. There was an increase from the prior year of about 3.4%. Like, is that in keeping with past years? Percentage-wise?
The tax levy, yes. Yeah, it's always, you know, two and a half plus new growth and debt exclusion, so it usually hovers 3% to 4%.
Okay.
The average tax bill will go up 2.9%. The levy's going up 3.4, and the difference is, you've got a lot of new houses that are offsetting that, so it's not a one-to-one ratio.
So, Mr. Bushway, did I read this right? If we go with option one, which is the 1.5 shift, both the residential and the commercial tax, the estimated tax rate will actually go down slightly?
Yes, that's correct. And again, that's a mathematical computation, because property values are going up to reflect the market. So, the average single-family value is going to go up 3% and similar to, on the commercial side. So, it's, you know, values go up, the tax rate comes down.
And also, and I think you said by adopting the option one, it will save the average residential taxpayer $207, is that right?
Yes, if we were over a single tax rate.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments from the members? All right.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Well, actually, we should make sure, because this is a public hearing, so anyone who wants to make any statements can come up as well. Actually, maybe we'll open the seats up in case anyone wants to, is there anyone here that wants to speak to the tax classification?
Don't all jump up at once.
Seeing none, seeing none. Any other comments or questions or discussion from the board?
Just that I think this is just consistent with the approach we've taken in the past about not adopting residential exemption or small commercial exemption and going forward with the shift to the commercial. So, as far as I know, at least for the last several years, and probably a long time before then, that's, this has been pretty consistent in the approach that the town has taken, Bob and Brian.
And it also looks, Bob, as if, you know, after the override year, we had a significant decrease in the single-family tax percentage, obviously after an override year you would, but then this is another decrease from 3.4% to 2.9%.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? Nope?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt a minimum residential factor of .9789, not to adopt residential exemption and not to adopt a small commercial exemption.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right, thank you, Mr. Bushway, thank you, Mr. Cronin. We'll now adjourn our public hearing on the tax classification, thank you, gentlemen, and we will move into our regular meeting, and we'll go to item four on the agenda, since we've already had the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll go to item four with public comment. Is there anyone here for a public comment? Gentlemen? If you could just put your name and address on the list, on the sheet there.
The pen is not working very well.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
My name is Mike Collins, I'm the president of the Milton Police Superior Officers Association. I'm here to speak on the issue of the appointment of interim harbor master and also the home rule petition to remove the harbor master from civil service. Just to give you a little background on how we became involved in this issue, we were informed that a member of the board had nominated a member of the police department to become the harbor master. Our understanding is the harbor master who was currently serving was removed from service, and an appointment was recommended by the member of the board. That appointment wasn't made that night, I think it was tabled for the next meeting. At that point, I asked the chief of police, and I believe Joe asked the chief of police if he was aware of what was going on with the harbor master, he really was not, so then we raised objections with the chair of the board based on a couple issues. One, that a member of our department was appointed, was tentatively appointed to a stipended position. The position was never posted, the position was, there was no job description, there was no real set plan. We felt, also at that initial meeting, a lot of the law enforcement responsibilities that would come with that job were discussed. We felt that the job certainly would impact the police department and should be part of the police department. After our discussions with the chair, my understanding was that a legal opinion was sought. My understanding of the legal opinion was that the board was told that the job either had to stay within the police department or completely separate. It couldn't mix, that there would be an inherent conflict if the job was a member of the department but outside of the department. We were further then told by the chief that we were going to be approached by the town administrator with the possibility of us agreeing to an interim, being appointed out of the police department, and then allowing the job to come out of civil service, and then that appointment from the police department, and then be separate from the police department and be appointed as harbor master. When that was brought to our attention, my answer would be no, because if it was going to be in the police department, it was going to be a benefit for the police department, I wouldn't agree to it being removed from the police department. We were never approached with that. My understanding was that that position was not going forward. Now, moving forward, there's a home rule petition that the warrant committee is sending an article to the town meeting floor to take the job out of civil service. The stance of the Milton Superior Officers Union is this, is the job is currently in civil service. The job, in order to come out of civil service, the town has to bargain with the police unions to take it out. There's been no bargaining with the police unions at all regarding this job. It's also our position that there's been a concerted effort to do an end around on the unions and also take the chief of police out of the decision-making process. We are opposed to that home rule petition. We're also opposed to any interim being named, because it is infringing on our right to collectively bargain the position. So, going forward, what I'm asking you to look at is a couple of things, is what is the urgency to make a harbor master right now? We're most decidedly in the off-season. We're, you know, November, December, January, February, March, there was not going to be a lot of traffic on the Ponson River. We don't have any major carriers coming down on the Ponson River. There is not a major impact on the town right now that requires an immediate decision on the harbor master. I think it's incumbent on the board to direct the town administrator to bargain with the police unions. If the board wants the job to come out of civil service, they need to bargain it with the police unions. If they want it to be a stipended position within the police department, that needs to be bargained with the unions. There's a lot of issues to hash out, which can be hashed out, but we have a seat at the table, and we can't be ignored, we can't be pushed aside, we need to be bargained with, it's our right. And my position is this, is if our rights are infringed upon, we are going to seek every remedy to protect those rights, and we just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board. So, I would ask you to look at that, examine that, examine what is the urgency to make this position right now? I don't see it. Even if you read the warrant, the warrant really doesn't endorse this position. They have a lot of the same questions we have. They raise some of the same issues. And I also think if you examine this closely, some of the issues that would happen in the winter, I think can be addressed, there are more zoning issues with boat storage, things of that nature, they don't need an immediate response from a harbor master or something that can be handled by another town department until we hash this out. So, we're respectfully asking you to respect our rights to collectively bargain this issue and to come to the table, and we're willing to sit down and talk about the issue and negotiate the issue in good faith, and that's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joseph Fahy, I represent the patrol officers. You know, Mike pretty much summed it up, but I'd just say a few more things. We're a small department, there are limited opportunities for people here. We have a number of stipended positions. In 23 years, I've never seen one of these positions appointed from outside the police department or removed to be appointed by someone else. You know, I think Mr. Wells is doing an end around here. This is a game to get who he wants made to this position. This is a good way you ruin the morale in the police department. We have a good chief, it's fair there. Again, limited opportunities, to have an end around, you know, without the union involvement, it's going to erode morale here. You know, we treat people with transparency and fairness, that's what we're asking you guys. This process from the beginning has changed several times. It's, you know, it's just a game now, it seems like we're doing everything we can to avoid the police unions, avoid the police department, and we're going to get this done one way or the other, you know? So, I think, you know, going forward, we'd ask you to give us the same transparency and fairness that we give to everyone else. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
I'm sure.
If you don't mind, I apologize, I didn't have a prepared statement, so I did leave one thing out. We have reached out to the town moderator, and we've requested to be able to speak at town meeting. We were told that since we're not town residents, we're not going to be able to speak on this issue, and we've expressed this to Mr. Hiss, we think that the standard he's using is subjective. Last year, the chief of police spoke at town meeting, he wasn't a town resident. Other outside groups and stakeholders in the past have been allowed to speak. Our fear is that we're trying to be silenced, and we just want that on a public record, and that's another thing we're going to work to remedy, and we've notified Mr. Hiss of that. We think the standard he's using is subjective, and it's not fair. We're stakeholders, and we should have a voice at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else for citizens to speak or public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item five, which is a conference regarding the parking study that the Chamber of Commerce did, and we have the Chamber of Commerce to present the study, and we also have a member of our planning board here as well. So, do we want to present the parking study first and then invite the planning board member to talk about it as well? Is that, does that make sense?
It's okay with us, yeah, we're fine with that.
So, let's see.
We do have some handouts, can we do that?
Is that the same?
The study, yeah, if you all have hard copies, that's fine. If you want hard copies, we have them.
They have a printed copy, but I might.
We're here to talk about the study, but only really one item tonight, we're going to be brief.
Okay.
You need one?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. Anybody else?
I'll take one too.
I'll give you two. Hot off the presses, we missed it some more.
All right. I have a black and white, but the color will be a little better.
Oh, the color.
Oh, it's going to go up there too, all right. Great. Thank you. I'm Mike Zulis, I don't know if we've met.
Mike, you're fine. I'm chief.
I'm good, I got it. I already have it.
Thank you, Paul.
Everybody thanks.
I don't want to let all this hard work go to waste, Paul.
All right.
So, my name is Paul Midori, I'm a former president of the Milton Chamber of Commerce. About 20 years ago, we started the chamber, Pat Desmond and I, and since then, we've grown to about 85 members. We're definitely the largest organization for business in the town. As you know, we create jobs, we represent, we fill roughly 1,500 jobs within those 85 people, so it's quite a few employees. Tonight, we have something for your consideration. Many of you have been through this report, it's fairly dense with information. In the report, we studied 17 neighboring towns, they're all laid out in the back, 17 neighboring towns, and from there, we decided that, from speaking to town planners, to selectmen sometimes, to police chiefs in many of these towns, all the resources that we have are in the back of the, they're in the back, we came up with the idea that particularly what we're looking for right now is, and we're very, very excited about for your consideration, is two-hour parking townwide. There are so many reasons why two-hour parking is important. Two-hour parking will allow patrons, number one is the shopper experience, that's the most important thing to us. The shopper experience must be good, pleasant, so that they come back time after time and they don't seek out our competitors, that might be in Quincy, they might be in Dorchester, wherever they are. The shopper experience also has to, is very important, that they don't have to worry about their time limits, that they're really quick. Right now, we have 15-minute parking in East Milton Square, we have half-hour parking in East Milton Square, two-hour parking and one-hour parking, all in a couple of blocks, very confusing to the patrons that are coming in. Multitasking is probably the most important thing too, one of the most important things. Multitasking is when somebody comes to the square, that they feel that they're comfortable enough to be able to do two or three visits, store A, store B, store C. Right now, many patrons are complaining that they come in and they're looking at their watches, it's a pressure cooker, and they just feel like, "I've got to go, I've got to go, I'm going to get a ticket." Vance just had an incident that he might want to tell you about, that kind of sums up something that just happened, if you want to tell them a little bit about that.
Well, I think last Wednesday, most of you got a ticket that had lunch at the parking lot.
A lot of hands going up there, huh?
I was in a lot, so I didn't get one. I got one.
Yes, it's, you know, two hours is what we all agreed upon, you know, when talking with all the other merchants, our customers, it just seems like a reasonable thing to do and more consistent, because it's really confusing, you know, for everybody really, as to what, you know, what is 15 minutes, what is, what is an hour, and what is a half an hour, you know, where the two-hour zones are. And what we all agree is that the two-hour parking limit will create a lot of spaces by making the employees park in the service zone parking, because we feel like that it's mostly abused by the employees and business owners and the business community that tie up the spaces for a full day.
One of the things.
Could you just introduce yourself?
I'm Merrill Mannan, I own, grown on Christie Jewelers.
And just talk into the microphone, Merrill, so people can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm Merrill Mannan, and I own, grown on Christie Jewelers. It sounds silly, but a woman cannot get her hair done and get her nails done in one hour. So, a woman coming to East Milton has to come twice, whereas the woman in the nail shop, because we went out to talk to all the merchants and wanted to know how they felt, the woman who runs the nail shop across the street on Fantasy Nails said, when she's doing the woman's nails, if they're parked at a half-hour zone, the woman says, "Hurry up." Now, that's not a good experience, and it sounds silly, but it's very important for women to have their hair done and their nails. And wouldn't it be nice if they could just come to East Milton and do this, and pick up their cleaning, and pick, we want people to want to come to East Milton, not say, "Oh, the traffic, there's no place to park, I have to get out quickly." So, we beg you, the police here. Also, the signs are so ugly, you know, if you look down the street, I think in front of my store, there's a 15-minute parking minute, there's an hour, and there's two hours. How do you explain this? So.
I might suggest, Merrill, that a man may need that time to get his hair and his nails done as well.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wells?
So, just a quick question. Since there was some history there with me, and I was involved in some, how this came to the situation, it's in now, and we did have a recommendation from the Traffic Commission, I think about a month ago, which, because I wanted to be checked with them. Do we have a motion that we can vote on this tonight? I'm looking for it.
This is supposed to, this is on for conference, so I don't know that we have, I mean, if the board, the board could, we haven't noticed a motion on this, it's on for conference, and I'm sure we want to hear from the planning board on this as well, and ask any additional questions, and I don't know if they're, Mr. Midori, if your presentation is finished or?
No, I've got a few more things. So, I would like to say that both the police department and the DPW are on board. They like the idea, it's much easier for them to tick it and enforce the time zones, if it's only one. Less signs could be used, there's a lot of signs now, you can use one in each one, it says two-hour parking townwide or whatever, that's really important. I also want to mention the fact that, you know, it's just that Vance and Merrill and I have about 120 years of experience in the square, when you add it all together. We talked to people, we're there, we live there, we're constantly living this, you know, 40, 50, sometimes 60 hours a week, we work hard. And, you know, the business owners pay a tax that's approximately 62% higher than the residents, and that's okay. We want to help out with the town hall, the fire, the police, and the schools and all that, we want to help out, but we just ask, we ask for your consideration to give us some of the things that we need to do business, so we can continue to pay those high taxes. You know, we just need amenities, we need better signage, we need pedestrian safety, we need parking, we need simplicity, and we need that ability for people to be able to go to two or three visits to two or three different merchants at a time. Let me just, there's a couple more points, and I'll be. there's a couple more points, and I'll be pretty much done. Interesting enough, during our study, we found a lot of towns are going to three- and four-hour parking. Braintree's a good example. Braintree had two-hour parking. The merchants actually wanted to go to four hours. And the selectman came back and said, "Would you accept three?" And the merchant said, "Well, fine." And it's worked out very, very well. And I give the sources for that. It's all through the report, all the sources for that report. Many towns are up for four hours. I think that's a little long for us. We don't have enough parking to do that. We were the ones who recommended the parking enforcement officer, PEO. So far, we think that's been great. And as we said, I'd like to say that problem again. There is an awful lot of employees that park in front of their own stores. They're taking prime spots. And that practice is amazing when you think about it. If you think of an average of one-hour turnover, if somebody parks there for eight hours, we didn't take one space. They took eight spaces. If they do that for a whole week, that's 40 spaces. If you want to keep going with the math, in a year, and even minus two years of vacation, that comes out to an amazing 2,000 spaces that were lost to the customers. So the PEO is helping us a lot with that. We do have one other thing we might have not handed out to you, and that is simply that we, the police department, along with the Milton Chamber of Commerce, came up with a nice handout. I'll give them to you when we leave. And the handout tells them the rules and the regulations of buying a service zone sticker for only $25 a year, which I think that's a great price. And most of the employees, employers, pay for that. We pay for the stickers most of the time. And it tells them where to buy them, how to buy them online, where to put the stickers on the car, and where are the spaces to park. So, you know, with that, I want to say that we probably are in the 90th percentile. I don't know of many things that 95% or so are in agreement of. The entire square seems to be in agreement. I'm sure there's one or two somewhere, but 95% is approximately what's on board, and we think that's really important. And, go ahead.
No, no. Was that--
I'd like to just finish by thanking you for your time and your consideration. And I hope that-- do you know, what should we do next, Mr. Dennehy?
So I think we're going to have comments and questions from the board, and then we'll ask the planning board chair to come up. And I know she wants to be heard on this issue, so we'll ask her to come up as well. So, comments and questions from Ms. Collins.
I have a few questions. Thank you very much, all of you, for coming in tonight and presenting the chamber's recommendation. Regarding the-- as I understand, your proposal would apply townwide to all of the business districts, not just East Milton Square?
Yes.
That's correct. So the Central Ave Business District, we have a number of businesses there. Tino's, the Coffee Break Cafe, The Plate, which is undergoing some changes. But there are some businesses that are short-term businesses. People may pull in for coffee or pull in for pickup, takeout pizza, and there's not a lot right in that area at the moment where there'd be a lot of shoppers. We've got the Henry's Project coming online, which is going to give us 19 parking spaces for public daytime use. What's the sentiment of the business owners specifically in Central Ave? Have they taken part in this, and what opinions have they borne?
They have. I will get the petition signed for the two hours. Most of them have. I believe Tino's been off and on with it. There is some benefits to them, too. There may not be a lot to do in that square. But again, having time to sit in a coffee shop with your computer and do what you're doing for an hour or so, and then being able to go to Tino's for a pizza is a good thing. If you're chased right out, then you don't get to do that two-, three-store thing.
I ask about Tino's, because I know that Tino's has had issues with people parking to go to Steel and Rye for two or three hours in the 15-minute parking spots right in front of his business, which has a big impact on his business.
Well, Darryl Elliott had a good talk with Tino a couple of times, and that was his real complaint, was Steel and Rye and other people coming in. It really wasn't against the 15-minute parking being lifted to two hours. So I can't-- I didn't talk to him directly, so I don't want to put, you know, I don't want to say. That's all I know is what Darryl told me.
And then, in terms of the square, you know, I think you raised a lot of good points, particularly in terms of the square that we should consider. What about the businesses such as Peel Pizza, maybe even Mr. Chan, some of them that have short-term-- a lot of pickup business. Are they on board with this, or is there-- are they among that 5% that are--
They're probably in the 5%.
I think also, though, that I think that the net yield of spaces that would be gained by two-hour parking, especially if it's policed, is that it will create more spaces in the square. And I think that's what we've been discussing at the chamber meetings, and it seems pretty obvious. If we police two-hour parking, I mean, we feel like it'll yield at least, you know, 30 spaces into the square, which would be significant for even the people that prefer the short-term parking.
You know, also, if we give it a solid year, then we'll know. Today, most of these signs, you don't take the whole sign down to change it. It's just the top-left corner goes from 30 minutes or one hour. It's a little blocked they put on. So it's really easy to do. But I would ask the board to consider at least a one-year minimum trial.
We could also just try East Milton and see how it works for a year. There's less. I mean, there are three that do takeout. Milton House of Pizza does have a lot beside them. I've heard him complain about Peel's people using their lot. It would be really, really a nice experience for the people coming to East Milton not to be stressed. And we see a lot of stress. People come in the store, "Well, I'm parked in front of that 15-minute sign." Well, I really-- I'm an enforcer, but, you know--
They do now.
But not the 15-minute, they don't.
No, the 15-minute isn't--
Because they can't.
Is not enforceable. The police department said that it is impossible to police 15 minutes.
Well, outstanding right there.
Right, exactly.
Other comments and questions?
I mean, I've talked to Mr. Chan. He, Walter's on board with them. I'm comfortable in
the square. I just worry, I see the pressure. Katie's right. I see the pressure of Steel and Rye just alone puts on just the whole district there. And I could see, I just don't want to have to undo something that we do. That was my whole concern last time. I don't see Tino here in a month like screaming because he can't-- or the Traffic Commission coming back in a certain amount. That's my only--
We would like townwide, but we'd certainly accept that that would be a compromise we would live with.
Would appreciate it.
Other comments and questions? Ms. Collins?
So I just want to clarify that it's really the parking enforcement officer that would help free up those spaces, and that the business owners are really trying to work with their staff and employees to move on to the sticker and the lot. Okay?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Other comments? Mr. Farrington?
So I have a few questions. My first question, somewhat unrelated, and I'm not saying that this would mitigate the entire, you know, parking congestion, but where does-- and I'm not in East Milton Square during the daytime, okay, on a consistent basis. But where does East Congregational Church's parking lot fit into all this?
It's used every day.
It is?
Every day.
So those spaces are full? That's a full lot?
I wouldn't say it's full. I mean, I walk, yeah, I walk--
You're right.
I wouldn't say it's full, but it's used. I mean, it's a good number of cars there every day.
And as business owners, like, where do you instruct your employees to park?
Along the highway.
Okay. Okay. That was my next question. So the spot--
And that church.
Okay.
Yeah, employees park in the church.
We have a lot of-- we have a lot of members that go there and employees. And they ask us, we've already talked to them, and they try to park in the front, not in the ones that are against their building. So the ones that are against the street, they have a lot of parking there.
Okay.
So we have a lot of members that enjoy that walk, you know, it's part of their fitness program.
So the spots that you're referring to are the spots that are on Adams Street and Granite Avenue. They're not the spots alongside the Southeast Expressway--
Yeah, yes.
--as you're heading up Granite. They're not the spots on the left. They're just the spots on the right on Granite and then both sides--
Also, the left, too.
Well, the left is--
On the highway, that would be two-hour parking.
It's already two-hour. The lots, the lot which is the angle parking across from Bruggers has been two hours for years and years. Same as the top right of the Fruit Center. That's owned by the Greenspan Building. That's the building we're in, and it's been leased to the town for a dollar a year, whatever it is, for 50 years. I don't even know how long. And that is two hours. And there's one more lot that's tucked in across from Dependable Cleaners, Altomas Funeral Home, right on the corner there, facing the Expressway. That's municipal. That's been two hours. Half of that lot is--
Service.
Service zone. Half of that lot is service zone. There's signs on one half, so the employees can park there.
Yeah, service owner's what the employees use. That's the service zone program. They buy the sticker for $25. Any police, anyone enforcing it can see it clearly on the car, and they think it should line up with a service zone space.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm generally in support of this. I am 100%. I think it is something that--
Thank you.
If at the very least, we could adopt on a trial basis. And my colleague, Katie, you know, she brings up a good point, but I don't know what's prohibiting us from, you know, doing a car vote and putting, you know, a plan in place specific to the needs of certain areas and businesses in town. Like, I'm sensitive to those businesses like Tino's and Peel Pizza, where it's a 15-minute, you drive in, you pick up your pizza, you leave. But if it's to the detriment of the vast majority of other businesses--
Yes.
--then I don't think it's a strong argument. I mean, it's not an ideal situation, perhaps, but I think it's the best option. But I think we could, you know, if we needed to, I think we could just, you know, put something in place that would be appropriate for each business district.
Other comments? Ms. Collins?
Just to follow up on that point, Tony, and I think probably the chair of the planning board will speak to this. I reported at one of our recent meetings that the Master Plan Implementation Committee took a vote unanimously to not support this at this time--
Okay.
--in the theory that it's a little bit premature. We have a lot of planning going on right now--
Okay.
--in the Milton Village area, East Milton Square. So the idea is that a lot of that should proceed forward before a decision is made on this. That's at least the MPIC discussion, and I'm sure Cheryl will speak much more eloquently than I will to that.
Well, my next question, and this might be a question that would be better answered after Cheryl makes her presentation, but my next question, and Paul, and Vance and Merrill, I'd like to hear it from you, too, as well. Like, what is the argument against this? We heard the argument in favor. In your words, what's the argument against?
There is.
There's very little opposition. There really is. And one thing I didn't say--
Because I did think of one, and I'll get to that when you're done.
Well, one thing we don't, we believe as the chamber, we just believe that there should be no special interest parking. You know, I would love to go out and put up signs, "Fitness Unlimited Only" in front of my store, but I think I'd be arrested the next day.
That's the worst thing I would say.
Yeah, I think I'd get arrested pretty quickly. Those spaces are not owned by any one of us, and we have a--
How far do you want to go with those signs? Off our office way?
So, you know, we can't get that feeling that, hey, in front of my store, I should get specialized for a thing. I don't like it at all. And one other thing that's important that I forgot to tell you is that two-hour parking, we have the mentality, a lot of us to say, "Oh, we're going to be parking there two hours, two hours." Well, two hours is the maximum. There'll be plenty of people parking 5, 10, 15, 20, 30 minutes. So that's not going away.
That's a fair point.
You know, and it's an important point. You know, it's not two hours is the absolute maximum. That's it. And the rest is, I'm telling you, if you go into the dry cleaners, it's five minutes, you know?
Sure.
Ms. Collins?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you-- everybody, any other questions or comments? I do have one. One of the recommendations you made was on the electric chalk electronic handheld scanners. Is that less important?
It's-- no, it's in effect. It's gone into effect.
It's in effect. Okay. Do we have those? Do we have those scanners?
The police department bought one scanner--
Just one?
--and the PEO is using it.
Okay.
Yeah. And we think it's good.
Okay. Okay. So this is really, this is your last, last recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if you have nothing else, we'll invite Ms. Taguays, Chair of the Planning Board of the MPA Master Plan Implementation Committee, Mr. Clark, to come up and tell the board their views on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Dennehy.
Hello.
And then, I'm Cheryl Taguays, Chair of the Planning Board, and as Katie said, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I did ask if I could take this recommendation to both of my boards, my board and committee, for discussion before coming here. So thank you for accommodating somewhat of a delay in scheduling coming to you. I first learned of the study and recommendation when I read an article in the Milton Times. When I saw that article, I emailed Chair Zulus and said, "Before you take any action on this, can you let our boards have a look at it?" So just for the record, the Planning Department and the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Planning Board, none of us were consulted about these recommendations or about this study during its process. Now, the boards, both, and Board and Committee both express, wanted to express thank you to the chamber for their work on this. I think we all have an interest in seeing successful business districts. Both Board and Committee have been working on these things and continue to work on them, which is really the source of our concern, is to move forward with this at a time when we're undergoing studies, and we feel as if it would be premature to move on this initiative until progress is made, further progress is made. We also had a pretty deep concern, as Katie mentioned, about having this be townwide without really hearing further from the businesses in those other districts. We had heard, too, about concerns about parking from Steel and Rye in our work on Milton Village, and we've heard about it previously on Central Ave. As Katie noted also, we have not only planning work underway, but we have the 131 Elliott Project, which will bring parking spaces that are available to the business district to bear in that neighborhood. I think there's still interest in whether there's more vitality that will come when that building comes online. And there is concern that right there, there's a trolley stop. We know, and we heard when we had in our planning work in Milton Village, that there's a portion of Milton Village where people are overextending their parking by many hours, and their thought is that people are parking there and taking the trolley and leaving their cars parked at those parking spots. So there is concern about the parking duration in those two districts in particular because of access to the trolley. Now, as part of the Milton Village study, we had a beta group engaged as a traffic and parking consultant, and they did a parking utilization study in Milton Village, where they found that the turnover was such that the utilization, the way they calculate, the utilization rate was 66%. So in their view, there was, one of the things we asked them is their capacity in the public parking to add additional business. Because when we look at the zoning we want to see, and we've been asked, can these districts take any more development? Can they take new business? Can they take new development at all? So it was an important part of the studies to see what kind of a parking utilization we had there. Biggest concerns that I already mentioned were Steel and Rye, how far up they park, and then people overstaying and enforcement therefore. And that was particular to High Street versus Adams Street. So our parking consultant felt that, yes, there is additional capacity with the existing parking. And the study itself, which is available to get an idea of what this utilization study could look like, this was done last November. And they spent a day, they spent a weekday there. They were, their scope was coordinated with our Master Plan Implementation Committee and town staff. But they actually mapped the spaces. They mapped the times that are, that those spaces are currently, the signs are in place for. And they looked at how well that was working. So in our view, that kind of study would be quite useful in East Milton Square as well. Tomorrow night is a kickoff meeting for the, our planning consultants' work in East Milton Square. It's going to be held in this room at 7:00, and all are invited. We're excited about getting this work going with this consultant. I think, as you all know, the ULI TAP was nearly a year ago, and we had been working towards taking initiative on some of the recommendations that came out of that technical assistance panel. And so, one of the things in talking with the consultant today, in fact, is that we were looking at some of the recommendations. And parking is a key part of how you're, how we're going to determine what additional development can be reasonably accommodated in East Milton Square. So doing that utilization, looking at what the turnovers are. Are there hotspots where the people want to park in those spaces, and there are other spots and other locations that aren't utilized equally? So having something move forward at this time, when we're right at the beginning, we think could be very confusing also down the road. You want to change something right now, and then the recommendations will come out in six months and suggest something different, perhaps. So we'd like the chamber, of course, they have a representative on our steering committee, which is leading this effort, and they will be able to provide their input into this planning process with the, including these recommendations. Bill, did I miss something?
No, you might add something about--
Want to add to it?
Sure. I'm Bill Clark, Planning Director for the town. A contract was signed with Beta Engineering for a townwide traffic model, and part of that is a truck-loading zone for East Milton Square. that is a truck-loading zone for East Milton Square. So, that comes after the process has been going for a month or two, but there is a truck-loading zone component to that study. The other part is, as we start talking about signs and the variety of signs that we have, yes, we have two-hour, one-hour, 30-minute signs, we have some 15-minute signs. Those 15-minute signs for East Milton are five to nine at night, and for the Central Ave Business District, they're six to 10. So, each one of those was put in by the Traffic Commission after being asked by entities down there to help Tino's that people don't park there. So, fine, we said between six and 10, that would be the busy time that, that small, small area would be 15 minutes. We picked, see, the two or three spaces on Adams Street in front of Mr. Chan's for his pickup, that's five to nine. So, it isn't that helter-skelter these things were given out. As we start getting into the two-hour, one-hour, these were things that came by citizens coming to the Traffic Commission asking for a lot of this relief. I think Cheryl was right when she goes that, yes, the Master Plan Implementation Committee did do a parking utilization study. We did look at Milton Village. Our charge at that for the first two years, almost three years, has been Milton Village. We are now taking, focusing away from Milton Village and moving to East Milton. I, I do think that the traffic enforcement person is what was asked for. We're, we're picking these things slowly, but to take and make wholesale two-hours townwide, I think, is a little excessive.
As an initial matter, before we get to questions, now, has, has the Planning Board and the MPIC, have they voted on this?
Yes.
Cheryl, and they voted, and how have they voted?
Unanimously not to move forward at this time.
Okay. And, and what about the Traffic Commission, Mr. Clark?
Complete opposite.
Mr. Clark?
The exact opposite.
Exact opposite.
It was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, so, we have the Traffic Commission's support of the study, and the MPIC and the Planning Board opposed moving forward at this time. All right, questions, comments? Mr. Wells?
So, we would have already voted this, or we might have voted this. When the Traffic Commission came here, we had a motion that night, and I think it was my concerns, because I wanted to see where the chamber was, number one. Number two, I do believe Howard Stein-Hudson did a significant, at, at the town's expense-
Yep.
-parking analysis in the square and recommended, back to when I was chief. Didn't they recommend two-hour parking for all the square?
It was 2011, I'm not sure.
But I think they did. I think they did. And we were, I think they did. Number three-
But, but that would be for the square.
I know, so, and I'm, to Katie's, I don't, it's on my three, four here, so. So, third point, I'm, I'm more prepared to go with the square based on that and based on the fact that the Traffic Commission is the governing body on traffic. You know, they make them, that's where our recommendations come from then. And they unanimously endorsed doing this. I'm more, my personal is, I'm more inclined to, let's try it in the square for six months, let them keep doing, put a six-month window on it, let them keep doing their work on it, maybe leave the village alone while you're working on this and then come back to that.
One thing I would ask is, there will be new signage and new enforcement, and customers will be asked to follow the new signage and the new enforcement, and then if six months later, or three months later, there's a request to change that again, there probably will be resistance and want to change it again. This is what, the first comprehensive look at East Milton Square beyond purely traffic or beyond that initial parking utilization, and things have changed quite a bit since then. I would suggest that taking one piece ahead of others could hamper our process.
So, here's the, go ahead, go ahead. So, I wasn't, I just, so then we come to the traffic enforcement part. We've got this kid hired, the smartest thing for us to do is have unified, a unified code. So, my, I'll leave with this thought. My gut is to ask to bring the Traffic Commission back with their recommendation and then we address it. My suggestion to you is that if you want to change their vote, now's the time for you to have a discussion with them, because my thought is, all we do is put them on hold. They've taken a vote, I think.
So, your idea is, is for the Planning Board and the Planning Director to, Planning Directors on the Traffic Commission, but to, to discuss this again with the Traffic Commission and then come back to us?
Yeah, and come back to us.
I have a thought on that. The Traffic Commission's an advisory body to this board. Planning Board's an elected board that represents the voters of the town. Master Plan Implementation Committee's appointed, but a couple of elected officials on it as well. I think all the Planning Board and the MPIC are suggesting is, there's a lot of planning going on right now. We have a major project we're going to start in East Milton, just with the, the square itself, with the reconfiguration, as well as the, the study that's going to be for potential 40-hour or housing or mixed-use or other opportunities. So, I think all we're suggesting is that it's premature. I think the chamber made some good arguments tonight for their position, and I'd like to see some of the further analysis that's going to be done for East Milton, get a copy of the Chamber's report, take that into account. But I, I wouldn't want to send the elected Planning Board to the Traffic Commission to make their case, because I think they're coming to us as an elected board that has a huge role in planning and to have to make a case to the Traffic Commission. I think, I think their role is to come to us, and, and really, so is the Traffic Commission's role. But they're, they're coming to us and giving their recommendation. We can, you know, we can choose among the recommendations, but I wouldn't want to send an elected Planning Board to the Traffic Commission for this. I really think we're just talking about whether something is premature, and there's no need to act now. We can defer this for a few months while there's some processes that play out.
I disagree.
Other comments and questions? Mr. Farrington?
I disagree, Katie, respectfully. I do think we need to act now. I, I think there's a sense of urgency that, that clearly the East Milton Chamber Commerce has brought before us. They need relief now, and they're asking for relief now. I'm not trying to discount or discredit any of the work, Cheryl, that you and, and your commission have done, okay? MPIC, Planning Board, that's all well and good. I think there's a sense of urgency to this, though, that I think action is required on this now. We've, we've heard from the chamber. Eighty-five businesses strong, 95 percent of whom support this. And I think most importantly, this isn't something that we can't undo. It, it's not set in stone. It may not be ideal. I'm sensitive to your point, Cheryl, which is, if, if we were to put this in place now and then down the road, something were to come about, and it would create confusion, and we, I understand that. It's not ideal. I agree with you on that point. But we've heard from the chamber, and this is a business community in the town of Milton that's robust, and, and I support it, and I support this initiative unconditionally.
Other comments and questions?
Just, Ms. Taguas? Mr. Chair, I think as you get to looking at what's going to happen when construction starts on the deck, and when you look at what happened when that first was blocked off and the change of traffic patterns around it, even here at, at Town Hall across the way, when the traffic patterns change, there's very confusing for people. So, I, again, caution that you are, don't expect that you're going to do things and change them three months or six months down the road and not cause confusion. And I, I do think it's even worth pulling out the traffic, we, what we talked about doing was pulling out the traffic or the parking utilization study that was done previously and asking to have that be updated. That update could probably happen within a month, and if it was decided that that should be expedited, that charge could go back and we could look at the scope that we've got in our consultant proposals if you wanted to move it ahead somewhat. But it's, for those reasons, in terms of, it, it's not something that you should really be looking at changing on a, on a very frequent basis. And if you're looking at safety, one of the things in particular, and one of the challenging things, my, my children are college-age now, but when they were toddler age and I crossed the square with them, it was a very dangerous place to cross, and I think people feel that it is today. But once the project is done and you have traffic lights and you have increased safety, then you can have people who are willing to park, maybe across from the post office or even down further, and do their business and not feel like they need to get in the car and drive again another block or two. And it will change people's behavior. So, again, it's part of what these analyses will look at. We've got the townwide traffic study going into place, the consultant contract, I believe, is signed, and we, with that model, we're going to be able to model things, and we're going to be able to anticipate behavior rather than putting it out as a, as a trial balloon in a, in a real physical way. So, again, because we plan, and I advocate for planning, and it's what I do for a living, I think the planning portion of this is critically important.
Cheryl, how fast could we move that ahead? You said we could move that ahead, we might be able to move it ahead. How fast do you think we could move it ahead?
We may have to reprioritize some of the scopes of work, so we'll have to take that up with the two bodies that have the funds available to it, so-
I mean, it's not something that we, we could, we could hear about before the end of the year, even if-
Well, we have, we're starting, we're trying to get the MPIC meeting rescheduled because we had it for the first week of December, which is now a town, special town meeting. But the next, uh, Planning Board meetings are December 5th and December 19th. So, certainly, we have opportunity to look at, we have funds available that we have not earmarked yet on both the Planning Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee. But the MPIC funds need to get approved not only first by the MPIC, but then by Planning Board and Select Board.
Yep, understood.
Planning Board is in Planning Board's control. So, if we looked at bringing, I mean, I can't speak for what, you know, both the committee and the board in terms of reshuffling priorities, but we can definitely take a look at it and bring it up at our, at our next meeting.
Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
And Bill is telling me we could get it done by mid-January.
Right. Just one sec, can we just, can we just get, certainly come up, and, and we'll definitely come up, but we just want to continue with the discussion here, and then we'll, Ms. Collins?
So, if, if we're able to reprioritize, that won't interfere, because one of the things that you said, wait a minute, was that parking will affect recommendations for, well, you didn't exactly use these words, these were, this is my interpretation, where, how, and sort of kinds of development that are, look possible and would be encouraged. Did I get that right from what you were saying, or?
Right. So, the Urban Land Institute recommendations suggested looking at parking not just on the street, so other, maybe whether there would be opportunity for other municipal parking. So, one of the things that we've talked about in Milton Village is the same, there's a small municipal parking lot there, and where the town has some opportunity to assist the businesses with how, how we provide parking, and it's not just curbside parking, that's a part of planning when we have these small business districts. And so, that's where, I mean, it may or may not impact the suggestion in terms of whether two-hours are the most appropriate. What both the Planning Board and the Master Plan Implementation Committee's concerns were is to push that forward without some further study at this time.
Okay.
Ms. Manon? Yes?
Okay. I am probably the oldest business in East Milton Square. I came myself in, forty years ago. While I've been in East Milton, there've been at least five major studies done. And at the end of each study, the same thing got done. It's time to look at the problem. Yes, I would love more parking. I appreciate that you guys are looking for more parking, but in the meantime, why can't we just take down those ugly signs and give everybody two-hours? I don't really believe it'll cause confusion. I only think, and I really believe it, for everybody, it'll be better for East Milton Square. I appreciate that you guys are working so hard. I, I hope and pray it comes about, but I do not see why we cannot take down those signs and give everybody up to two-hour parking now.
Other comments and questions from the members? Mr. Wells?
So, obviously, I live in the square, I'm there every day. I can honestly say, having worn many hats in this, in this fight, this concept or whatever, this, it is the thing people come to me the most about. The other day, we were, I don't even know how many people came to me the other day when we were at, I mean, it's, it's the thing that's been asked for the most. I don't, I haven't heard it in the Village or Central Ave, but I, I'm with Katie on that. I have more concerns about down there than I do in the square. But in the square, I tend, I mean, I hear it from citizens, I hear it from residents, I hear it from all the business people. And as, if, if I'm correct, I'm the first person I think I ever really heard and really pushed hard was Howard Stein-Hudson really trying to push the Traffic Commission hard back when they did the report to want to do it, and we were trying to, the many of the things we're talking about tonight, we tried to, like, even the 15-minute, it didn't work. I knew when we did it, like, Mr. Chan wanted it, we did it, it didn't, and here we are, three years into it. That's why I'm just, I'm inclined to ask the Traffic Commission to come back and have this, at least the discussion on the square.
We have a gentleman standing, and Mr. Midori, are you part of the chamber, sir?
So, I'm a member of the Traffic Commission.
Okay.
A citizen, volunteer.
Okay, so, we, we kind of want to keep it, I think, to the people who are presenting, but if you're on the Traffic Commission, I guess, go ahead. We do, we do want to try to confine it to what's on the agenda, but please talk into the microphone if you-
Sorry, I'll be very brief.
Yep.
And we spend a lot of time-
Could you identify, identify yourself, sir?
Steve Geister. I'm a resident, a volunteer on the Commission.
Yep.
One of the residents.
Yep.
And we, we spent a lot of time studying this report and actually talking about this a lot, and I, I think we're getting confused about three different parts of town that are different. So, I live in Central Square, down that area, just up the hill, and I go and, I know, I know Tino, I know Mackey, I know everybody that owns all the businesses down there, and they have a different issue than, than East Milton. They have, I don't think it's so much of the, the restaurant that takes time, because that's off times, it's more the commuters.
Yeah, the Charles.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And there's so many people that just slide in and disappear for eight hours.
Right.
And so, hopefully, the Traffic Committee, I mean, the police can do something about that with a new hire and everything. But I, I think trying to put all three parts of the town together and try to find one solution may not be the right solution, and may be different for each one.
Fair point. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Midori, I think, wants to, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We waited forever for Howard Stein, at the cost of approximately $225,000 of the, of the taxpayers' money, to do their recommendations, okay? And, and we've waited forever. We need relief now. The other thing is, this is not a major change. This is not a major change at all. Half of the signage, at least half of the signage in East Milton Square is already two-hours.
It is.
We want to get rid of the confusion. It's mostly on Adams Street and Granite Ave. That's really the only signs to be changed. Almost everything else is already two-hours. This is a small request that we think would do us a lot of good.
So, so, let me, let me, let me make a suggestion. Is there, is there a middle ground here where there are sections of East Milton Square that there's no question? Maybe there's not, maybe, maybe there isn't any consensus, right? But is, is there some kind of middle ground in the short term, middle ground, short-term consensus between the, the desire for long-term planning and the desires for the, for the, the desire of the, the businesses to, to, to enhance their, their opportunities? Is there, are there some, is there some number of spaces that could be, that could be discussed where we could kind of come up with a, and, 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 I think I'm, I'm just suggesting to the board, is that something we might want to see if we can explore in the short term?
It seems to me that Bill is, in his scribbles on his sheet here, to me, notes, I should say, thinks that there is some opportunity to look at some, not doing all streets two hours in East Milton, but maybe working with the chamber to come up with a recommendation. One of the other things I wanted to mention is that this loaded, this question of loading is going to be something that's important, because having service zone that's in other places, service zone is usually for loading and not really for staff parking. But, you know, getting the terminology, I mean, I, I got a parking ticket when I parked in service zone when I didn't know what service zone meant, you know? And, you know, there's, but even so, in certain places that I'm aware of, other places, there could, there's, parking spaces on the street are marked for loading only for certain hours, and then those turn back over. And so, this is one of the reasons why, if you, if you want to look at the best way to manage the loading in, in East Milton, to have businesses have adequate parking, to have their, make sure that, I think it was said earlier, employees in parking right in front of the, the business, it, it should take some consideration before just changing all the signage and saying, okay, just give that a try, because people will be frustrated again. Changing the loading zone, I know, has come up with restaurants in East Milton, and there's been frustration, and people have even come to the Planning Board about frustration with loading. So, solving the loading is going to impact curbside, I can tell you that.
So, so-
Because the trucks are going to need to pull out curbside, and that affects the parking spaces.
So let me just focus on the possibility of finding some common ground in the short term. Is it, in this, to take Richard's suggestion, is it possible for the Planning Department and the chamber to get together to try to make a, come to a consensus for a short-term recommendation to the Traffic Commission and have the Traffic Commission come back to us by our next meeting, which is December 4th? That may be aggressive. Our next meeting after that is December 20th, I believe. Eighteenth. Eighteenth. So I appreciate the urgency, Ms. Midori. But I do appreciate the desire for long-term planning. And I'd like to see if we could get some short-term consensus on this.
I think we could.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I think we could. We'd certainly sit with the Planning Board. However, you know, we've already made a big concession. There is a lot of members in Central Ave, we even have them on the petition, and Adams Street that want the two-hour parking. So we've already made a big concession, to be honest. But, you know, we're willing to talk. We just want to get moving. We just need to get moving. The confusion is massive because of the different numbers of spots parking. That's where the confusion is. I guarantee you, when that's all two hours, the confusion will go away.
Ms. Conlin. I think it would be reasonable to task the Planning Director to work with the chamber to see if there's some compromise for East Milton. I think it's important that the viewing public in the chamber knows that, you know, this board has worked pretty hard for a lot of years to try to get increased parking in the square. We went through several years. I sat through a lot of it, of trying to get parking on that deck, right? We're all working together on that. I think what we're focused on right now is, we've had issues in the past where there's been criticism that the town didn't go through an adequate planning process, that things happened, there wasn't enough planning that was done, and we weren't focused on long-range planning. I'd say over the last ten years or so, we've made a lot of strides. We've had a master plan done. We've done housing production plan. We're redoing the housing production plan. We've had a town government study committee that's going to report to us later on. So we've been engaged on a really proactive basis, doing a lot of planning. And I think that's what I'm hearing from the Planning Board. I know that's what the MPIC was talking about, that while there may be some perceived urgency in the sense of the chamber here, we're the Select Board. We represent not only the business people, but the residents in the town. And we've had a lot of people with headaches. There's the square itself, the traffic around the deck, which we're going to go through a major expense or project on to try to get that addressed. There's a lot, there's a lot of balls in the air right now. So I appreciate Tony's comments and Richard's, that we want to try to do something to address what the chamber's presenting to us as a problem. I just want us to do it in a smart planning way. And if, first of all, I'd like to see if Bill could pull the 2011 Howard Stein-Hudson Study Force and send that to us. Probably not everyone has seen it. I know I haven't seen it in a very long time. But if there's a way to task the Planning Director, I wouldn't say for the December 4th meeting. I think that's just too soon with the Thanksgiving holiday. I would say at least late December, early January. It may be urgent. I don't think we're talking urgency that can't wait until after the New Year, within my sense.
May I just make a comment? For the business owners who have spoken, I just want to make sure that the planning, that they understand the planning that we're talking about now being different than the planning that was done in the past because that was based on traffic and parking and not comprehensive, looking at zoning. And so when we're looking at zoning, we're looking at the potential for an overlay. That overlay could be what's called a 40R, which would allow for more affordable housing. There's going to be a lot of question about what, and there already has been a lot of question to the Planning Board, what kind of additional development can the square take? And so it's, that's what, I just want to make sure it's clear that it's a broader discussion. And it's based on thinking about what new uses might be desirable there. And if there are new uses that include new businesses that might have a higher parking requirement than others, so a restaurant, let's say, or a medical office, it's important for us to understand how, whether that parking could be accommodated. And so we've heard from our traffic consultants that, particularly in Lower Mills, when we asked the question, that medical office and dental office, they have a much higher turnover and a much higher parking demand than another kind of business might have. And the hours would, that they operate are all during the day, whereas a restaurant's at night. But it's understanding that mix of business uses, the mix of residential, and the differing parking and traffic demands of each. So that's why it's important for us, anyway, to think of it comprehensively. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. And I do think we need to move on. We've been doing this. Ms. Collins.
Ask one question. Okay, so given that, you still think you could get it done by mid-January?
Back before this board, by mid-January.
Well, I'm sorry, back before this board, in May, Jerry, with what? With a compromise or with a study or with what?
Right.
Hold on. Let's get an answer to that question first.
One, and I think two. Yes, with the chamber on what we can do in East Milton. And I will call Beta and ask them about, having them take and review what Howard Stein-Hudson's already done, what Howard Stein-Hudson did for a Falcone project, which the Planning Board actually added to and got more traffic information from them for that. So it's piecing those back together and having Beta take a look at it.
Now, Mr. Ferentz.
I'm a little confused on one thing. I think Richard mentioned earlier, the Traffic Commission supports this, correct?
Right.
Why are we having this discussion with them again if they already support this?
I think it has to do with the all-of-town. It's the all-of-town issue. You're looking at, what the chamber is asking for is that you do this holistically all around town. We know that Central Ave and Milton Village don't necessarily need.
The same treatment.
Let me stop you for a second. Is that the case, Paul? Are you asking for this townwide or are you asking specifically?
No, we already said that we'd accept that compromise. We are asking for townwide so that it would be simple. We're asking for townwide so it would be simple to the shoppers who go in any of the districts. They would know, I've got two hours. We think that's better than leaving East Milton and having a half hour.
So I think, so I think the answer, Tony, is the idea to go back to the Traffic Commission would be with a compromise. But go ahead. You have another question?
Well, Mr. Geister brought up a good point, and I tried to make it earlier, and I don't think I did a good job of it, which is each of these business districts is somewhat unique in what their needs are and what their problems are. And I think it's very apparent to all of us by now, if not, it should be, because we've been discussing this for a half hour. You're coming to us and you're asking us to solve a problem. And I'm more than happy to support this. I'm respectful of these studies. To me, this is very organic and it's very fluid. And what matters to me more than a study by Howard Stein-Hudson is the voice of the business owners of East Milton Square.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Conlin.
I just want to clarify, Ms. Midori. So you initially came in and said that the chamber was requesting this townwide.
Yes.
But you said you're accepting a concession, meaning the people in the room here or the chamber thing?
What you saw was the three committee members. I'm the chair of the committee. There's three of us, Vance and Merrill. So it would be left up to us, and we would bring it back for a final vote for the.
Yeah, that was my point.
Yeah.
We'd just have to go back to the chamber for some further consideration.
We'd get that done real quick.
Mr. Wells, oh, sorry, sir.
And again, you know, with all respect, I think planning's great. Planners do fantastic things for towns. I've seen some amazing things. But, you know, talking about future stuff is, whether there's new businesses add and stuff, could be a two, three, four-year project before that happens. And in the meantime, we're all, we're all living with this confusion. And we are having shoppers that are leaving us and going to other places, going to plazas and everywhere else. I mean, the planners, I would think, would want the businesses to thrive so we can pay our higher tax rates. And so that 71% of my members come from Milton. So with 71%, they're going to have an easier time. And then as far as the different businesses, that's all in the mix. Like we said, the two hours is two hours, and then for some, it's for 10 minutes, and it's for 15. In average, it might be one hour total. So every business is taken care of, and again, last time, I'll repeat myself, is that that business, that other business is taken care of because business A gets done, and there's time to go to business B and C. It works for everybody, you know. A high tide rises all boats. In this case, that's what would happen with two hours, we believe.
Mr. Wells.
So I get all this, and it's hot, but so my, the bigger concerns, the immediate concerns that I want us to address as quickly as possible is A, we know the 15-minute is unenforceable. And I'm not sure how many 15-minute spaces there are on the square, but there's at least.
There's either two or three.
Two or three.
I think two.
Three spaces. So three?
Three.
So three spaces are prime, and I don't want to let that sit for six months where we have an enforceable working there every day. So if, I could just ask Mr. Demme if we could at least have the Traffic Commission come to us, maybe at our next meeting, at least to address the 15-minute parking in the square. So you can at least just change in three spaces.
Well, that would be the board that would have asked Mr. Demme to do that. That would be the board. Hey, hey, let's not, let's not lose our decorum here, all right? So, Mr. Midori, you all set? All right. So, Ms. Conlin.
That's an important point. What Bill is saying is that the 15-minute parking, including down on Central Avenue, is nighttime parking, right?
I'm not going near the Central Ave or anything.
But in the square, it's nighttime, right?
There's a sign on the sign. It says, 15 minutes.
And I thought that I heard, Mr. Midori, I just wanted to clarify. I thought I heard Mr. Midori say that most of the parking in the square is two hours. So we're probably looking at a small universe of parking.
We are.
To see whether there's any compromise that would impact that small universe.
And the 15-minute parking is only, is, might start at 5:00 or 6:00. But in the square, there's a ton of businesses open. It's not, it's not like all of a sudden, everybody closes, and the 15-minute for Mr. Chan is there to help him. It's not like that at all. I'm open. There's hairdressers open. There's two restaurants open. There's a lot of businesses open until 9:00 at night.
All right. Does a member want to suggest an action here?
I move that we task the Planning Director with working with the Chamber of Commerce and any other interested or applicable board or committee or department of the town to consider whether there's a proposal to be made for revised parking in East Milton Square.
The only friendly amendment I would make is to task the town administrator, to task the Planning Director because of the chain of command.
That's fine.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Has it?
It was seconded, yes.
I didn't hear.
Aye.
Any further discussion?
This will be the as quickly as possible. That's all.
So, yeah, so maybe we put a timeframe on it. So.
Middle of January.
Middle of January, Mr. Midori? Middle of January?
It's fine with me.
All right, so.
And the chamber.
All right, so by middle of January, we'll all come back, and hopefully, we'll have a compromise that we can, that we can act on. Ms. Collins.
I just want to say thank you, members of the chamber, Select Board, and Bill. I do think the compromise makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Conlin.
That could be an outside date. Obviously, they could come back sooner.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We have meetings.
We've got holidays coming up. I think it's reasonable to give them until the middle of January.
But we do have meetings on, we do have meetings on the 4th and the 20th.
If you work out earlier, come.
Ms. Collins, Ms. Collins.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on whether the study, we're looking at moving the study up to mid-January. That was an affirmative?
I'm going to call Beta and ask them to put a D.C. into the contract for looking at.
Okay.
So if I may just clarify a little bit, we could probably do a two-part study like we did in Milton Village, where we look at the existing condition, and then after we do further study, and we are starting to look at how much additional build-out, then we update it.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. I apologize for the long discussion, but I think it was fruitful.
Do you want me to stay with the chair?
Oh, so, yes, well, Mr. Geis is here. We do have a review of our articles, which is item.
Twenty-three.
Item 23, and since Mr. Geis is here, she can give us, you can give us some background on the, some brief background, or brief background on the Planning Board articles in the event that this board wants to take a position on those. So that would be Article 7, establishing Planning Board Associate Member. Article 8, Planning Board Member, Associate Member, Section 4. And Article 9, the zoning bylaws, the wetlands regulation. So why don't we take it one by one? And if you could just give us a very, very brief update. We know generally what the articles are about, but it's really for the members to ask any questions. Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Article 7 and 8 are companion articles. So if one goes, then presumably, the other goes. You may recall that the Planning Board submitted an Associate Member article previously, and we voluntarily took it back once we learned that the Government Study Committee had done some work on something similar that we had not seen prior to, right before town meeting. And so we did take it back. We did bring the, the Town Government Study Committee, invited them to a Planning Board meeting, had them review the article. We discussed what we were looking to do. And then they voiced their support for the article, and which then is one of the reasons why we brought it back forth. I think you may recall, the reason behind it has to do with the supermajority votes required of the Planning Board and special permits, and the burden that could be on particular members or on applicants or even on potential members of the board. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments from the members? Is this something that the board wants to take a position on, wants to vote on, or I don't know that we typically do?
I'm happy to move to support it, having done some work for, on the issue a number of years ago with the Town Government Study Committee. I support it.
So why don't we take Article 7 first?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Article 7, support for Article 7. Well, I guess we could take them together.
Seven and eight together.
Seven and eight together, all right. Motion's been made to support Articles 7 and 8. Question's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One of those has to do with general bylaws. One has to do with the zoning bylaws. That's why there are two articles.
Right. Article 9, the wetlands regulations. Ms. Tagayas.
This is really a housekeeping article, and I, Bill has further expertise on this, so if you have questions about it. But the wetlands regulation, in terms of the body having approval power, changed in the 1980s, but our zoning bylaws never caught up.
All right. Questions or comments from the members?
I move that we support Article 9.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Tagayas. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
The article actually says that the Planning Board would give to the selectmen the power to address their wetlands. You don't want to do that. That's what the ConCon has there, Chapter 15.
All right. Item 6.
Mr. Chair, you want to go to?
I think we can do Item 6, and then just the, that's the Eagle Scout. And then do Item 6, and then we'll go to our, I think we'll go to our Town Government Study Committee.
I'd make a motion that we approve a citation of recognition, congratulations, to Eagle Scout Raymond Joseph Rose Jr. This, the motion be to ratify the citation recognition for Eagle Scout Joseph Rose Jr., 242, to be presented at his Court of Honor on December 1st, 2019.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have the citation in front of us. All those in favor? Any further discussion?
Congrats. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. And so now, we will move up without objection. I think, do we have all the members of our Town Government Study Committee here? Do you want to move?
We have one more that is coming. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so do you want to, do you want us to wait?
Yes, please.
All right, so we'll wait. So we'll move on to Item 7, which is a follow-up of our airplane issues town hall that we had last Thursday. And let's see. All right, so.
That's good to cover.
So, any, first of all, I'll open up. There was, there was one letter that we received at the, at the hearing, or at the, at the hearing, if you will, that we may want to discuss on whether to move forward on. But first, before we go that, before we go to that, is there any, any comments, questions from the members? Seeing none, we did receive a letter dated November 14th, signed by a handful of residents, about the comments and requests for corrections on the 7/10/19 letter and requests for recommendations report. There were five items listed, and so that's something that we have before us now. Does any member want to take these, or do you want me to, want me to go through them? So, seeing none, seeing none, I'll go through them. So the first one was this issue about the language on the runway 27 departures. We had some discussion about that at the hearing. I think the view of the board is that reexamining the runway 27 departures has been the view of the town since 2016, and that our requests are consistent with that, supporting the test of that. There's right now no consensus on what the, what the test will consist of, what the flight paths will consist of. But the intention and understanding was that we would try to be involved in the discussion of what that test would consist of. And so I think that was, that was the view that was, that was described at the, at the meeting. So does anyone want to move forward on this, this request? Ms. Conlin.
No, in a word.
Okay. All right, all right.
And could I expand on?
Yeah, please, please.
You know, there's some errors that are in this letter and that were voiced at the meeting on the 14th, that have been voiced in social media, that have been voiced in emails, that have been voiced in a letter that went to the. voiced in emails, that have been voiced in a letter that went to the FAA from a group of residents in the town. Number one, it's not, the request was not for the FAA to do the test, the request was for the MIT study group to do the test, and the information that's in this letter, saying that this will allow the FAA to test and implement, and FAA decision to test and implement in the next paragraph, that's just factually incorrect. So, that's, that's number one. I listened to the tape of the meeting that the Boston Fair Skies group had, two nights before ours. I want to say on the record, I thought it was irresponsible for Citizens Group to schedule a meeting on airplane issues, two nights before the town had a meeting scheduled, a longstanding meeting scheduled, because I think it created a lot of confusion. Some of the people who signed this particular petition, I think, were not fully informed as to what the issues are. I know some of them, I'm going to reach out to some of them. There's a reference in here to a meeting in January, and a vote in January, and I think that was dispelled at the meeting on the fourteenth by Mr. Doherty, but if anyone is still under the impression that it's going to be a vote on our, at least on ours, and I think on any community's block two recommendations in January, I think we've clarified that that is not the case. So, I am not in favor of any, I don't think any correction is needed, I think we made our position clear that we may have a different opinion than the, a certain group of residents, a small, but very vocal group of residents, but this has been asked and answered many times. Many members of this board have met with members of the Boston Fair Skies group, at least one member of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee has met with the Boston Fair Skies group. We have had emails from the Boston Fair Skies group. We have a difference of opinion, we believe their information is incorrect, so I don't believe any correction is needed.
All right, there are, there are four other requests. The second request is about asking the MIT consultant and the FAA for certain answers. My view of that is that that's really the province of the MCAC representative, and we can forward that to him, and he can, in his discretion, use it or not use it. And item three, I'm, we had public comment earlier, I'm not sure, this is really the board discussing this, so...
Where can someone ask a question?
You can't, you've already...
Well, I mean, I mean, you can, you can ask, I mean, we're in session now, you can ask us after, after the meeting, or you can come into public comment after, I mean, you can ask a question anytime, but right...
Public comment is open.
That's right, that's right, that's right. We have another public comment next meeting, and you can certainly ask us after the meeting if you want, but for the purposes now, this is our agenda item, and we need to discuss it, so. So, item three, so we'll, we can refer, without objection, we can refer that to the MCAC rep. Item three, again, there's a request to add things to the addendum, you know, I think we can consider that, maybe refer that to the MCAC rep. Now, item four is on the glide slope, I think, you know, this is something that has been considered before, raised several times since last June, I don't know if anyone has a different view on that. And then item five is, again, requests about, specific requests, that adding specific requests about altitude, and again, it seems to me, but anyone can weigh in, that that's something for the MCAC rep to, to consider, and we can certainly forward it to him. Is there any, any other, I mean, any other?
No, I'm happy to refer some of these matters to the MCAC rep, and, you know, I think he may have actually been given a copy of this on the fourteenth. Mr. Chair, there was one question, since this is generally a follow-up on our town hall on airplane issues, there's one question that appeared on two Facebook posts regarding clarification of the funding for the air quality monitors, and I'd like to just, it was stated at the meeting on the fourteenth, but let's just answer that question, because the question has been, why is it not showing up in the December second special town meeting warrant? It's because we approved the funding in June, as you, Mr. Chair, said at the meeting on the fourteenth. The Airplane Noise Advisory Committee and this board had public discussions about that going back in May and June, and that's, I think it might have been reported on in Milton Times, but there's been a lot of public discussion about that. Funding was approved in June, and I think as you, you or Chairman Schmidt from the Airplane Committee explained at the meeting on the fourteenth, there's a lag time between the time we order the equipment and it being built, and then we receive it. So, hopefully that answers the question that has been posed.
Any other comments about the town hall? I will say, in terms of what Ms. Conlon said about the letters and the things that have been said in the local media, what concerns me most is the, the claims that have been made about transparency. Transparency is probably the most important thing in our government, and I think everyone at this table takes transparency and the importance of open, transparent government is very important. And so, when people make claims, particularly to the FAA, saying that Milton is not, does not have a transparent government, and is not conducting open meetings, and is not noticing open meetings, it seems to me that this board, representing the town of Milton, and the people of Milton, needs to object to that. Certainly, people can have their opinions and make their opinions known, but when, when people say that there haven't been public meetings and public input, all they need to do is look at the videos, you know, they need to, all they need to do is look at the videos of meetings on June 12th, and June 26th, and September 25th, when these, when these things have been discussed, may have been discussed in other meetings, that's just, that's just off the top of my head. You know, there have been other things said that we didn't notice, it was said in one of these letters, that there had been no notice, that it would be, the board even, didn't even have a notice that it would be discussing and voting on the matter, and, you know, the notices are all there. I mean, we have, there's a notice of the June 26th meeting, discussion approval airplane noise, proposed response and recommendations to MIT draft study, so it's, it's all there, you know, the notices are there, the, the videos of the public hearing, public meetings are there, the discussions are there, the emails are there, and so, and so, I guess, I guess it's important, I think it's important for this board, when, when people are saying that the government's not transparent, it's important for us to, to stand up and say to residents that the government is being transparent, we are having public hearings, and we are noticing things, and we are having public discussion, that's all we do. And I would hope that before people sign or send in a letter to a federal agency, that they would, they would check that, and they would look at the videos, and they would look at the notices, and that they would listen and see that those discussions were had. And so, it is a little troubling that there are people who are telling the FAA that we haven't been transparent, when I think all evidence is to the contrary, but, but people have a right to say what they're going to say, but, you know, it seems to me that this board, when people are saying that about Milton, to a federal agency, that this board on behalf of Milton, needs to at least say that we object to that, so that's all I'll say. Mr. Wells?
So, I address this specifically to the two of you, Ms. Conlon and yourself, because the two of you do the bulk of the work on this issue. I mean, there are, there are times when it comes, like the other night, when it comes before, before board, when we're present for discuss, we get, we get a lot of emails and data and reports, but I just want to say that for the two of you, for the ANAC, for the MCAC rep, for people who are interested in it, I mean, I've seen nothing but consistent effort. And as I said the other night, to one naysayer who was at our town hall, at our joint meeting, every person I've seen, from Congressman Lynch, to our legislative reps, to in this room, this is a massive, massive hurdle. This is airplane noise, and is really, really difficult, and you can't work on it solely, you have to work on it collectively, and it appears that, everything I've ever seen, it appears to be that way, and in my time as chair, and the few conversations I had with some of the Massport reps, with the other members of the CAC, the, you know, the CAC, local CAC, whatever. But I agree with you in that, you know, anyone who says we're not being transparent, and we're not telling people, or we're not telling the truth, is dead wrong, because I can't even count on it, even it's you, yourself, Kate, and it's in the three, as I've been here, I put towards this, as have so many others, I mean, it's not an easy thing, and I get there's differing opinions, but just because you differ in your opinion, doesn't mean we're not being forthright and truthful, and I, I take exception to those comments. That's all I have to say on the matter.
Ms. Conlon?
Mr. Chair, could I just add, you know, I think we all recognize that airplane noise is a very emotional issue for many people, because it interrupts their sleep, it interrupts their daily lives, they can't have an outdoor function without one plane after another overhead. We all understand that. Sometimes the ire gets directed at the select board, or at the town administrator, or at the CAC rep, or the Airplane Noise Committee. None of us are the ones who put the concentrated flights over Milton or any other community. We, as a community, need to be united, and we need to not be divided by a small group of residents who are trying to just take potshots at the board. What we need is to be united in our approach to our federal delegation, and to know that the long-term solution is in the United States Congress. This is a federally created problem, and it's going to be solved at the federal level. And we need to keep our eye on the FAA. The FAA is the culprit here. The criticism of the town bodies, employees, personnel, is misguided, and it's not helpful to the cause. And hopefully, going forward, we can have everybody working together, every member of this board, every member of the Airplane Committee, the CAC rep, the town administrator, the employees of the town who work, or have some connection to this issue, and who live in town, all of us are impacted by the airplanes over us. Each one of us at this table has, whether it's four R, four L, twenty-seven, thirty-three L, or some combination of them, we're all affected by that. So, we understand the concerns that people have, we share their concerns, we empathize with it, but we need to move forward productively. And some of the recent activities, some of the ads that have been appearing in the Milton Times, some of the letters to the editor, especially when they're based on incorrect facts, are not helpful, and hopefully, we can go forward in a helpful, productive manner.
Well said.
All right, item, is our town government study committee here? All right, let's move on to item, item nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Asking Bob His, who is also the joint appointing authority, you recall that five of these appointments are done by the moderator, Bob His, and four are done by the board, so Bob has joined us tonight, and I've asked the members of the committee to join me also, if you're here.
How are you? You get to get checks, you get to get paid?
We're here to celebrate John's birthday. Happy birthday, John.
He's twenty-one today?
Yeah, twenty-one, happy birthday now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town administrator, and Jennifer. Let me just, first of all, introduce the members of the committee that are with us tonight, Kathy Fagan, Carrie White, John Cronin, Peter Mullen, and Marvin Gordon is also a member of the committee, but is unable to join us tonight, so that's the group that we have, and again, our moderator, Bob His, who is your co-sponsor, if you will, a co-appointing authority for the committee. And we take this opportunity to come in tonight, and we concluded our eight years, we expire by sunset legislation on December first, and so, at this point, after eight years and some over one hundred fifty meetings, I think we've reached the point where we've accomplished a lot, and I just want to go over that with you tonight, and we'll be happy to entertain questions at the end. So, I think that's, that's the purpose of the meeting. Each of you should have received a copy of this written report prior to the meeting, so I'm not going to read it, I'm just going to summarize and walk you through some of the key highlights. So, again, we began in November 2011, reconstituted by the town meeting in October 2013, and one of the major issues that we faced initially was the issue of governance, and so, there had been issues raised in Milton, whether the town meeting, former government, was the appropriate form of governance for the town, and our committee took a look at that and reviewed what goes on in other towns, and decided, after a period of extensive study, to stay with the town meeting, former government, but to have some changes made and improvements made. And you've seen those changes and improvements made by moderator Brian Walsh, and now by moderator Bob His. That's been evident at the town meetings, as the procedures and rules have changed, and one of the goals, obviously, is to increase retention of town meeting members, so they'll run for reelection, and obviously, to make the meetings, you know, move swiftly, and to have everybody ready and prepared. One of the things that we collectively, all of us in this room, and all of the town meeting members, we need to promote and encourage candidates and participation in the volunteer of former government, because as much as people like town meeting, and as much as committees like ours exist, whether it's this committee, or the warrant committee, or other committees, the volunteer of former government is what has driven Milton, and we need individually and collectively to promote that, and to encourage more participation, especially by the generations younger than us. Another area that we looked at, we decided it was necessary, was the Department of Revenue Study, and that Department of Revenue Study was completed in September 2013, and that was essentially a consulting report. That report was provided for free to the town by the Bureau of Local Services within the Department of Revenue, and has been done for some two hundred and fifty other towns over the last twenty years, and that was a valuable tool, and if you don't have a copy of it, we'd be happy to get that to you, but there should be copies in the town hall. It contained some thirty-three recommendations, of which our committee chose to address about fifteen of them. The other eighteen were directed more at the town treasurer, the town accountant, and other officials within the town. But we took a look specifically at fifteen of those thirty-three recommendations, and one of the first ones that came out of that was the need to strengthen the town administrator's position. And as you know, that was approved by town meeting and incorporated in legislation, and as part of that, the town administrator's position was essentially added to with duties that sometimes, frankly, were performed by the Board of Selectmen. I was there as a Board of Selectmen member, we would sometimes get caught up in some management details that should be performed by the town administrator, some minutia, my recollections of approving flea markets and other types of things, that kind of stuff does not belong in the town meeting, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen's meeting. So, the select board is still, though, the executive, so really, the town administrator is your chief operating officer, and we think that this model has worked out very well, and certainly, the legislation that was passed has, is really a detailed job description. The next thing that was related to that was the increase in the size of the select board from three to five. Most of the peer towns have done that well before we did. That was needed for you to handle more issues, I looked at your agenda tonight, it is loaded. There's more complexity, I mean, you've driven away all the customers here, nobody's watching. I was surprised at the parking lot, I had seats available, or spaces available. But, in any case, again, the idea was, partly was, to have you be able to address more issues, and at the same time, also, by going from three to five, provides greater resident representation, so there's a broader representation for all of town's residents, and that's consistent with what's been going on throughout the state. Another recommendation that's been implemented, again, through the enactment of a new bylaw, chapter twenty-four, was the Chief Procurement Act. First of all, that was needed for this town to get in compliance with chapter thirty B, which is the Uniform Procurement Act that the state has established many years ago. But more importantly, it's designed to provide the town with more centralized purchasing, more efficient purchasing, and also, to provide better controls. That's an area where the town always needs to look closely and have better controls, and hopefully, there's going to be some savings that enable the town to better spend its money. Another area that we reviewed, and again, looked at a number of towns, was the need to revise chapter thirteen, the personnel bylaw. Really, that need to be modernized, that started back in the fifties, and there was a need really to go through and reflect the best practices in human resource administration. And part of that also was to clarify the duties and responsibilities that were related to the town administrator. So, as we created the strong town administrator, there was some overlap of duties, we had to clarify the overlap, and clarify the responsibilities, for example, on the improvement of pilots. Another important one that relates to other topics we're going to get to, was the strength in the audit committee. And as you know, the audit committee is appointed by the moderator, but historically, the audit committee had been appointed and then reviewed the audit. The audit committee as constituted today actually conducts the procurement of the auditors, that had been done by the selectmen before. The procurement of the auditors and the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is done by the audit committee, so the process is really independent of the Board of Selectmen until the final procurement is completed. And then, the important piece that was added was for the audit committee to report publicly at town meeting on all of the recommendations by the auditors, improvements in any issues that were raised. So, that's a real, talk about transparency, as I heard earlier, that's an attempt to be transparent about the needs for the town government, to make sure that its performance meets the controls that are out there in the public accounting world for public municipalities. Another area that we looked at, and we've actually come up with a number of recommendations for committees that have been established, bylaw committee, remember Peter Mullen is actually the chair of that bylaw committee, and looking at reviewing, really, I guess, what's the word, Peter, for when you revise a little bylaw? really, I guess, what's the word, Peter, for when you revise a bylaws? You codify?
We are going to codify, yes.
All right, so, that's, so Peter has a duty after this meeting. We also recommended the establishment of a Pilot Committee, and I believe that's been in place for a number of years. And last but not least, the IT Committee. We certainly believe there's a number of critical IT issues, strategic issues, that the town needs to look at, and we recommended the establishment of a separate committee to go ahead and address those strategic issues, including, by the way, cybersecurity. That's an area that is a real threat every day. Another one was to recommend the funding of the post-retirement benefits, health benefits for retirees. The town, you know, was setting aside money for the pension, but the OPEB, OPEP, is a critical piece, and that has been, started to be funded now, so we're happy to have that recommendation, and we recommend that that continue to be funded. Hopefully, at some point in time, the pension plan will be caught up, fully funded, and the savings that, or the monies that currently are dedicated to that reserve will then be able to be put into this reserve in addition to what's already being appropriated. Finally, we get to the last piece, and that is really, in terms of finance. What we have found in the town, what the state found when they did its review, was that the town was very fragmented, decentralized. We think we partially addressed that with the Town Administrator's job description by indicating that the Town Administrator is really, and we put duties in there that clarifies that the Town Administrator will be the financial leader and working on the finance issues and budgetary issues. But there's still a need for the treasury function to be moved into the Finance Department. It doesn't make sense to have the Treasury, Cash Management, Investment Management, Debt Service Management, and Tax Collection not part of a Finance Department. So, you need to have that become part of a Finance Department. And in order to do that, you need to have the elected treasurer's position become part of the Finance Department by making it an appointed treasurer's position. The committee unanimously recommends strongly that the question that was on the ballot last year be placed back on the ballot this coming April for consideration by the voters, to make this town have a, one Finance Department, and not have a fragmented, decentralized operation as currently exists. Again, you've heard me say this before, over eighty percent of the towns our size have already done that. It hasn't always happened the first time towns tried. A number of our peer communities had to go to the ballot more than once, and part of the problem is that we collectively need to educate the folks as to why it makes sense to have a centralized Finance Department, and why the duties should not be split. So, Mr. Chairman, that really is the highlights of what the committee has accomplished. And again, as I mentioned, over one hundred and fifty meetings, the members during that eight years have talked to town leaders across the Commonwealth, reviewed governance and best practices in towns across the Commonwealth, and really, had a number of working groups and subcommittees that have met over the last eight years. It's been a hard-working committee dedicated to improving and keeping Milton a great town. So, again, I want to thank all the members individually, and I listed in the report, we had a number of members that participated over the years, and they are listed at the back of the report, all of the members that served. So, there's at least eight or nine members there that were enlisted as well. So, we'll entertain questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins.
I think we can't thank this committee enough. This committee has really done groundbreaking work for Milton, great recommendations over the years, a lot of hard work, a lot of effort that was put into it. And although it's a jointly-appointed committee, and it started off as a committee appointed by a prior version of this board back in two thousand and eleven, none of us were on the board at that time. And a lot of the people who were chosen have just excellent experience. We've got former members of this board, former town administrators, former planning board members, others who have served on, who have served on this committee over the years and really have done great work. So, I think we can't thank you enough for everything that you've put forward, and you've brought forward important and, you know, ideas that are, and recommendations that are going to help keep town government vital, and bring about changes, and probably was for further changes, but I think we owe an awful lot to this committee, and we couldn't, we couldn't have had better people serving on this committee over the years, especially this group that's here in front of us, that a lot of them have stuck it out. Rick has been here, and John Cronin, and Peter, I think, from the beginning, and not quite, Marvin, from the beginning. So, eight years is a lot of time to put into this. So, to Rick, and to John, and the others who've been on for the eight years, a big thank you is owed.
Thank you very much.
You're here.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, let me, let me act.
Can you write them their check now?
Let me act.
To all reach.
Let me echo what Katie said. This committee has reshaped our town government. Some of us are here in these positions tonight because of this committee, so, for better or worse.
You wrote a big check, then.
But, but it's, it's, it's truly throughout the years, this, I mean, I'm not a student of history of Milton as Mr. Cronin is, but certainly since I've been here, it's been the Town Government Study Committee that has produced the most deliverables and the most change, and been the most productive of any other committee, at least, at least in my judgment. And so, so given that, you all deserve just more thanks than we can, than we can give you, so. And hopefully, when we have the next Town Government Study Committee, Mr. Cronin will be, will be able to serve on that one as well.
Mr. Chairman, I should have asked the members of the committee if they wanted to add to or supplement what I reported on.
Mr. Mullen, do you want to just give Mr. Mullen the microphone? We don't, we don't want to miss this.
I think all the members of the committee would like to thank Rick Neely for his chairmanship throughout the entire eight years, for all his support and all the time and effort that he put into this.
Yeah, there is.
Is, is Mr. Hiss going to spring, what's that? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Hiss.
Just briefly, I'm a member of the Massachusetts Moderator Association, and there's committees like this scattered throughout the Commonwealth. But, and I've talked to a lot of moderators who are appointed to similar committees along with their Select Boards. There's not a one of them that's served for eight years and has come up with the breadth of change and scope and consideration of this one. I mean, they, they might last two to three years and then disband, so I think this group has just done yeoman's duty, and really, I think, all the citizens of town that care about this thing owe them debt of gratitude, so my thanks.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob was a member of the committee as well.
Oh, shush. He found a better job.
So, is Mr. Hiss going to fund a party, a final party for the group?
I could do that.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Collins.
I just have one comment, and that is that I really appreciate how the committee answered questions, both in front of the board, but also, one-on-one, when I had questions. It made a big difference, and especially when you're a resident and, you know, running for an office, and your clarity, I realize then, really serves all the residents very well. So, just thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Great model.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Going back to item eight, is the Harbor Master position, maybe we'll, we'll give Mr. Wells a moment. We could, we could move on and take some other, take some other, I think Mr. Wells wants to weigh in on that. Do we want to move on to?
We can have a pilot.
Item, all right, let's, let's move on to item eleven, which is the acceptance of the pilot payment. Item eleven, acceptance of the Milton Academy pilot.
I move to accept a pilot payment, a payment in lieu of taxes, in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars from Milton Academy for fiscal year two thousand and twenty.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to comment.
Mr. Ferguson.
Very briefly, Milton Academy did make a payment in lieu of taxes this year for a total amount of one hundred and forty thousand dollars. As many of you know, they did file for tax abatement in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which was granted, and they very dutifully agreed to continue to pledge that amount of money to the town coffers, which they've done, and the town appreciates that. They, in addition to, to making that payment and making us whole, in a way, and continuing to have that amount of money on the, on, in our coffers, if you will, they've made an additional payment, they've rounded up to one hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, the net benefit to the town in the form of a pilot payment is eighteen thousand dollars. They've also, in keeping with the prior year, made a recommendation, pardon me, they've made a donation to the Police Department for ten thousand dollars, they've made a donation to the Fire Department for ten thousand dollars, and they have generously made a donation to the, the new youth center in the amount of five thousand dollars. So, that's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. The town's grateful for that, we thank them. I think it's a wonderful beginning, it's a wonderful first step, it sends a great message. I'd like to continue what I hope are fruitful and beneficial discussions as part of the Pilot Committee, the Town Administrator, and my colleagues on the board, continue those discussions with Milton Academy, and, you know, work together to see if we could increase these payments moving forward for the next fiscal year as well. So, thank you, Milton Academy, the town appreciates it, we appreciate it, and I look forward to, we look forward to chatting with you soon.
Any other comments? You know, I will say, Tony, I, your comments are well-taken. Various times over the years, Milton Academy has taken, taken its share of negative comments on the, on the pilot front, but the fact that Milton Academy has now increased net their contribution to the general fund by eighteen thousand dollars this year should be recognized, and as Tony said, it should be recognized, and they do deserve credit for increasing their payments to the general fund and making those additional donations in addition to the general fund contribution. So, so as I said, Milton Academy does deserve credit, and we need to, we need to make sure. I've certainly pointed out the fact that they, that they, that we hoped that they would do it over the years, and so I want to certainly recognize that they are doing it, and they're moving in the right direction, and as Tony said, we hope it will continue. Mr. Tony?
Oh, well, I just, yeah, again, a wonderful comment, and, you know, I wore my Milton Academy colors in celebration of the, of the announcement, and.
Oh, my God.
That one's rich even for Mr. Wells. But, thank you again, and we like to see this, it's a great start, it's a great beginning, and, and we hope that our other nonprofit, our major nonprofit in the town of Milton would be receptive to ongoing discussions with respect to a pilot payment moving forward, so. To be continued.
Motion's, oh, Ms. Collins.
I also want to thank Milton Academy, but also thank Tony and the Pilot Committee for their efforts. So, thank you, Tony. Should we submit some kind of a letter to Milton Academy on behalf of the board thanking them for their increased donation?
I think it's a wonderful suggestion.
I think, yeah.
I think we should.
Want to add a follow-up motion? Katie, a friendly amendment?
Yeah, it could be asked whether it's the Pilot Committee or to draft one.
I did submit one on behalf of the town and, and signed it in, in coordination with the board.
Okay.
There was a brief discussion about that, yeah.
Okay.
Similar to the, the letter we sent to Curry College after we received that.
Great.
Okay.
And that went out last week?
Uh, yeah, I believe it was mailed out Friday.
Because the date of these letters was October thirty-first, so I'm guessing, yeah, within the last, okay. Awesome.
So, can I just ask?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
You already made a motion? Did you make a motion already?
Yes, motion's been made and seconded.
So, just one question, on the five thousand for the teen center, that come to your, that come to you directly, come to your office?
It came to POC's commissions.
Okay. The only thing is, I know the Reverend's numbers crunch, maybe we could have discussion on it, this may help him.
We actually had a discussion of that yesterday in terms of what, what funding goes for what, and the fact that, and I can get in this later on, reporting on the teen center, but the fact that the town, given donations such as this, is able to help out with more of the outfitting and more of the, the personal property that's, that's going to be, that's going to be outfitting the teen center, so, so that's absolutely right.
Okay, that was my only concern.
Yep.
I'm fine.
All right. Any other discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Okay. Do we want to just do the item twelve, the Milton Library Staff Association Collective Bargaining Agreement, since we're here on that one?
Sure.
Item twelve, Mr. Dennehy, I believe this one's up to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Happy to announce the ratification of the Milton Public Library Staff Association during our collective bargaining. A three-year contract was reached. I'd really like to thank the negotiating team, Sally, Patty, and Jean, met often, were very receptive. It was, it was an excellent negotiation. I understand that they ratified it early last week, so that will go into effect as soon as it's signed, and retroactive to July first, a three-year contract through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a three-year contract with the Public Library Staff Association effective July one, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-two.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Collins.
Do we, there's a single line just in town of Milton, do we need to sign this? I think the board usually still signs these, or do we want to authorize the chair to sign it, or the Town Administrator to sign it? I think in the past, the board has signed the union contracts. In fact, I think that might be in the special legislation.
Yeah, I think, I think that's right, and I think we.
But I guess we could delegate it to the chair.
We could, but I think it's probably better to have, to have all of us sign, so if we could, we can approve the contract and then just change the signature page and just add us, and we can, we can add those signatures.
All right, so friendly amendment to the motion, and just approve and sign the three-year contract.
Okay.
All right.
Did someone second?
Motion's been.
No, Tony.
No, you're in here. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Thank you to the negotiating committee, thank you to the, on both sides, the town and the library workers for this, it's a, it's a good step forward, so. All's in, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Going back now to item eight, the Harbor Master. We've had this on the agenda a few times. I'm not sure if we want to take this tonight, or, or where we want to go with this, but the, the floor is open.
I'll speak to him, if you want, just, and probably in response to the two speakers that spoke entering Citizen Speak, Public Comment, so just a little bit of history. Our work in this began as a result of the MPIC's work and all the efforts they put in down there. Clearly, in their work, and to this board, even from the time I got here, we realized that, A, the Milton Yard Club had no lease, we were advised by Town Council to develop a lease. It's taken a yeoman's work over this past summer from just the one subcommittee because of the so many elements down there between no lease, the easements, who owns what, who's responsible for what. Harbor Master, that's a volunteer who's a member of the Yard Club, who has the Yard Club's interests, and clearly, you don't have to spend much time at either the MPIC or our meetings to realize that this is an area of town that's changing, this is an area that has value. Just in the past month, both Representative Driscoll and Representative Colonnane have come to tour the landings, both have designated, they believe, there's money for, A, a new public ramp, which is a recommendation of the MPIC Committee to, to the, to us, through the, and with the work they do with the MANPC, some of the dredging, which is essential for anyone who's going to use it, to include better use by residents, everything. My opinion in this looking is no one can. No one has can. Not the police, not the boards, no one can. And for those who do complain, and I get the complaints about the Yard Club, no one's helping them either, and then no one was, no one was supporting managing. To the suggestions about the harbor is clear that, we've talked to Quincy, Town Council Paul King, I can't thank him enough, he's talked to Quincy, Boston, Pangham, Braintree, I mean, there's so many out there that he's talked to. In the beginning, it was clear that we need to put some money at it, stipend a position, we're not going to have a full, I mean, maybe one day we will, maybe one day, who knows who comes in and sets up on that river one day. It's going to be used more than less. From a, just a public transport point of view, we are at a time, if you read anything the governor's said on his agenda, this Commonwealth is looking at all forms of alternative transportation other than cars, and that river is one of them, for not just us, but for us, Quincy, and Boston, to support a high-speed ferry running from Quincy all over the city. And that makes a lot of what the work that the MPIC did and put in their report eligible to apply for money. So, no one cared, they didn't care. They didn't care. No one cared. I tried, as Katie knows, I tried this when I was chief in 2011, or whatever year it was. Matter of fact, Lieutenant Collins was the person I put in charge as chief. The board decided to stick with the volunteer harbor master. They did it. I lived with it. Um, I learned from it, but I lived with it. When we did think it, we thought of one person, we didn't, A, no one ever, ever would have thought it was in civil service. We did take a vote. We never voted enough. We voted in June. We talked about this today to have the town administrator be the appointing authority, not us. That's the one vote we've taken. If anyone recalls, that's the one vote we took. Developed a job description. Page went to the personnel board. It was approved by the personnel board. Found a source of funding, a ten thousand dollar stipend to come from the rents that come from the RFP. And that article's going to town meeting in December. In finding out the civil service aspect, to be honest, it's, it's far as who gets it, I don't care. I believe, and I still continue to believe, the town administrator should be the appointing authority of that. Whether it goes in the police department, the fire department, I don't care where. Are an independent person that we hire, are that he hires? Who's qualified? That's who, that's what we did and that's what I think we still should do. The confusion here is somehow in the civil service part of it, that the police department thinks because the job was in civil service that it's theirs. That is not true. Every job he was in civil service, to Mr. Cronin even admitted it. Every job was taken out. The only two that remained are police and fire. Removing the job from civil service, no one's, we, we were shocked, both of us, when what Paul King said, because it was never a paid job. Had it been a paid employee back in 1970, whatever, they took them all out, that would have come out too. If we were to, if we were to keep it in civil service, it's probably going to require us to go to a statewide test, which they haven't given one in years. It's not going to, it's going to minimize, make a very small pool. It probably may not even be a resident because it's probably a veteran's preference, which most civil service jobs do. All I care about is A, is that this committee just appointed, is that the tournament, that we give the town administrator the ability to hire someone who can go down there and manage it for us. And as far as the conversations with the chief, you and I have had three, and I don't know how many you've had on your own. And he's indifferent either way. And I, I'm like, what? All I want, I took you down there? You saw it last week. I took you on a full tour of it. You've been down there. All I want to do is make this a public amendment, as it should be, managed and governed by us. Because it's going to be used more and no one's going to, can, no one other than those that are using it now are going to use it anymore in the way and shape it's run, which is we don't want it. It is wrong for crew, which has truly put so much in, I mean, I don't mean for crew, for us, who's put so much in down there and developed such a program over the, the past five or six years for the residents and especially the children of this town. Something that was articulated in the lease that never even happened in the prior lease, to have to park their boat on a private dock in that river. It's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And those are things that just can't happen. And, and as far as, and even for the Yard Club, the people from the Yard Club who came to our meetings, they welcome a new public ramp. They welcome approvals. They're kind of living what they're day-to-day as well, because that's how we've been with them. It's been day-to-day. So I just, my feeling is that we continue to move forward in this amendment. And I'll make a, a motion tonight that we, that we, a lot, because the only way we, until we have an article and it's, if it's passed by town meeting, um, is to, he can only appoint an interim. That's what town councils told us, our provision, lead the one. Until, all give a test. It's all we can do right now if we give the authority to, as we did already, for the town administrator to hire a harbor master.
Other comments and questions?
And where he goes with it?
Oh, sorry.
And he comes back to us with it? I'm fine with whoever he goes. But that the fact that, that somehow we want, I don't care who gets it. Did, did we have a person in mind? Did I have a per, yeah, I did in the beginning, because it was no, no one is cared. Clearly, we can't go that route. I'm fine with that. But this came to us. This is on our radar. It's incumbent upon us now to move this forward. We have the chance to make this whole plan happen, to find funding, to make it better, to put the programs there that need to be there. And this is a step in that direction.
Other comments and questions from the members? Mr. Farron?
So I, I have one, I have one comment and then I have one question. I'll start with the question first, um, because there tends to be some confusion, at least from, from, from my perspective on this. And this issue has become somewhat muddled over the last few weeks and few months. But we voted to, to classify this position, um, not to be removed from civil service, but not, but not to be exclusive to it.
We didn't even know it wasn't civil service when we took our vote.
Okay. Meaning, we can hire someone from the civil service, which as Richard pointed out, is the police department and the fire department, in addition to others. Is that correct?
No, no.
No.
Oh, so hold on. Police and fire is civil service.
Right.
But everything here in the whole town was civil service. Everything but police and fire came out. Because there was not a paid harbor master, and I think John Cronin said it was in the 1970s when they took everything out, we didn't take it out, because there was no, there was no paid harbor master. And because we didn't do it then, what town council found was, we never removed it. So, I get the police, just think harbor master. For us to appoint the harbor master. And one of the things that town council did say to Mike and I repeatedly, was about the authority vesting in that person. There's a lot of power with a harbor master. To appoint the harbor master in the town, forget a department, just appoint the harbor master in town. Right now, it's in civil service. So we will have to, he will have to notify H I D, call for an exam, which will probably be a statewide test. They're probably only, they haven't given it in years. It couldn't, it isn't even on their website. People will apply, take it, and he'll get the top three names.
So let's be clear. We, we have, we do have a memo from town council that the alter, and email, I think, that the alternative is, um, if, if Mike, um, appointed it through the police chief and appointed a, a, and put it in the collective bargaining agreement, they could appoint someone from the police department.
He could do it in anything, in a CBA, right? He can do whatever he wants.
In civil service. So, so if we wanted to, if, if we delegate it to Mike and the town administrator, and the town administrator delegates it to the police chief, and it's in the collective bargaining agreement, a type, a police officer could be appointed as harbor master as soon it was, as it's in the collective bargaining agreement.
But only someone drawn from the police department could be appointed.
Correct.
That's the distinction I'm trying to make.
That's correct.
Only someone in civil service.
That's correct.
I recall us having a discussion where we were deliberating on whether or not to expand it to, to include civil service and other applicants.
We did.
So...
We did.
Right. So, that's a direct...
We didn't take a vote, but we had a discussion. We discussed it. We did.
Because that directly contradicts what we just agreed to.
So if it's in civil service, there's two ways to go. Through the police department, and it has to be in the collective bargaining agreement, or outside the police department, and you'd have to go through the procedure that Richard laid out.
Or the, or our article, or our article.
And then the alternat, and then the alternative is to take it out of civil service.
Mm-hmm.
And then Mike could appoint someone outside of the police department.
Mm-hmm.
Could not appoint someone in the police department in that case.
He can if it goes on the CBA agreement.
It couldn't, he couldn't, Mike couldn't appoint someone outside of civil service if it were a second job. It would be, have to be appointed by the police chief, has to, as part of their police job. Otherwise, it's the conflict of interest that we heard from town council, right?
No, that's where, that's what he said.
So you can't have it, so you can't have it appointed by, we can't have some, we can't have them outside of civil service in a harbor master job and inside civil service in their police job.
You can if you put it in the CBA.
I don't, well, I, I believe, I believe, I believe...
If you put it in the CBA, that was my question.
We, we can actually, we can get, bring town council back, but I believe the instruction from town council is that that would create a conflict of interest, so.
The conflict comes if it's not the CBA.
That's not my understanding.
So, I mean, I've done yeoman's hours on this thing.
No, I understand.
I have two more comments. In fairness to Richard, uh, this is an issue that he's worked on. It's only natural that he would have somebody in mind who think might be a good fit for this position, much the same way, um, you know, as, uh, a member of the pilot committee, the chair of the pilot committee, that I would think, uh, of potential citizens that might be good additions to my committee. So, uh, in fairness to, to Richard and to the, the, um, charge earlier that, that he had someone in mind and this was an end around it, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. But I will say, uh, if we put this to a vote tonight, I plan on abstaining primarily for the reason, I just need to get more clarity on this. This has become too muddled in my mind and I'm not prepared to make a vote that I think is, uh, an informative vote. I'd be doing myself, uh, in the town a disservice. I've, I were to vote on this tonight. And, and as I mentioned before, I made a pledge to myself when I took this job to, to always vote, uh, on issues that come before us. But in this case, I would abstain because there were a lot of points that were raised earlier that I just, uh, questions that were, were brought forth that I just want to get the answers to before I do make a vote. So, um, proceed as you will. I, I don't plan on voting on this, uh, one way or the other tonight. I will abstain.
Other comments and questions? Ms. Collins?
Well, I, I have to say, I am confused too at this point. Um, and now that I, I hear there are two different interpretations, I, I do feel like I need clarification of that. I agree, there's going to, I mean, there's growth happening and, um, a lot of wonderful opportunities and we, we do want, um, the area to thrive. And so I, I realize too, we want to do this sooner rather than later and we've been waiting a long time and I'm really sorry about that.
Mr. Wells?
I'm fine with, all I care about right now, and I don't even care if we withdraw the article, but all I care about right now, because I think there's too many questions into, is appointing what is here. Authorizing the town administrator to appoint an interim harbor master. That's all I care about. I don't, I, that's all I care about. I don't care who, he can get who he wants. I don't care who the candidate is. I don't care.
Richard, I just, I just want to speak to that for one second. I think part of the problem with that recommendation may be whoever Michael might appoint would be given an unfair advantage as the leading candidate for the permanent harbor master.
Well, if he stays in civil service and we give a civil service test, that's not going to matter.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, that won't matter.
That's all I'm saying, is, is that there may be people that, that have that perspective.
And I'm even, I'm even so much in, I suggested this to him, because this was another committee suggested it to me. I suggested to you to do what Quincy did. Make the police chief the harbor master. The mayor did it with Quincy. The chief is the harbor master. And let him pick whoever he wants to be over there. And that way, if you want to move forward and if we decide you want to keep sitting on this, that's fine. We've got to, we've got, this RFP's going out this week. The Governor's Business and Economic Director is coming here Tuesday to give us alternatives to apply for money, give us potential things to apply for money, to meet with the town plan on what money sources are available. We need to take a step. I don't care if it's permanent. I don't care. But at least on an interim basis, we need to give this guy, we just had this whole committee.
Ms. Collins?
So I, I, I actually talked to the chief about this and, um, he, he said he thought that it made sense from an enforcement perspective to have, um, the police involved. So I wonder if we could find out if...
He did. He said that to us, but he was indifferent. It, we, oh.
Right, no, but I'm saying...
I want him to say, I want it, I'll take it.
Right.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't give us that.
Well, um, well, I, I guess my, I hadn't heard about making the police chief the harbor master and as you said, ha, having him decide who's, who's down there. I would be interested in seeing if that would work.
Ms. Collins.
So I, I think where we have two members of the board with different understandings on the conflict issue, I think we need to pin down the, the answer to the question on the conflict of interest question. But, you know, the big issue, this was less of an issue at the MPIC, more of an, a little bit, but more of an issue at the, at the WRF committee. The issue was just enforcement. Well, and I guess to that extent, you know, it was, it was an issue at the, at the Master Plan Implementation Committee meetings as well. Six years ago, when we appointed a resident to serve, you know, this was a volunteer position. I don't remember any discussion about civil service. I think there was probably no understanding at the time.
There wasn't, because he's not an employee, he was a volunteer.
You know, it was a volunteer. And I believe when we appointed, it was a member of the Yard Club. The prior person had been a member of the Yard Club. I think if you go back in at least recent history, it's been a member of the Yard Club. It's certainly been a volunteer, an unpaid position. And perhaps it just fell through the cracks or nobody realized that it had, it would normally have been a civil service position if it hadn't, um, if it hadn't been volunteer. So the big issue is enforcement, which is a police function. Um, I think if you're, if you're looking at the two civil service departments, the police and the fire, it's more naturally inclined to be the police.
I agree.
So, I, you know, I guess my hearing from the officers representing the unions tonight, also knowing what Richard's intent is, I think, which is to address the unmet needs that are down there at the WRF. You know, there, there hasn't been a lot of enforcement of, of the moorings, of going down and checking that, you know, there's been...
Anything.
Anything that's happening down there. We've had complaints from residents in ADI at WRF Street that there's some, whether it's, um, you, some potential criminal activity or other activity that may be inappropriate at the WRF that's happening, that they've raised issues. And a lot of that is a police issue, but some of it, if there were a harbor master, some of that might be addressed through the harbor master. Um, so I think there's probably a reason to have it be a police position since it's an enforcement position. But I think the key thing is trying to make sure that we get someone in place who's going to have some authority to handle the issues that are coming up. And we are spending a lot of time on this area and I, there are a lot of unmet needs. So I think it's important that we address it, but I'm not clear myself on that conflict of interest question at this point.
So, so, so to that end, I mean, there is no conflict of interest. If, uh, the town administrator were instructed to negotiate with the unions, to put it in the CBA, and then it could be appoint, and then a harbor master could be appointed by the chief? And there's no conflict of interest, there, there's no question about whether there's a conflict of interest. So in, in terms of getting, um, a, a, a harbor master with enforcement capability So in terms of getting a harbor master with enforcement capability in place, seems to me that would be the most efficient way to do it. To see if the town administrator could negotiate with the unions to put it in the CBA, and then include it as a stipend position in the police department. Seems to me that's the -- that seems to me that's the easiest way and the best way to get it done. But, Mr. Wells?
I'll disagree with you in this. I'll agree with you and disagree with you. I'll agree with you in that we need to -- I like the idea of the town administrator appointing the police chief, and then let -- then work out the rest of that. So that we have a harbor master named now. He doesn't have to negotiate with the chief. He can just do it. The chief is the keeper of records. The chief is actually the animal control office. He has all these other duties, keep a lockup to come. I was -- I didn't know the Quincy thing, and when that was presented to me last week, I was impressed by it. And I talked to the Quincy chief, and it works for him.
Yeah.
And then let him -- then let him work it. I don't care about -- we shouldn't be involved in -- but that's his job. We're done in that. I don't want to be involved in -- and I don't -- and the last thing I want to -- and I don't want to belittle this. I want to talk about the fairness aspect of it. I grew up in that building. I spent 32 years of my life in that building. Katie knows how I walked away, and she was here. I know what -- I don't go in that building. I've gone back once, and I don't think I'll ever go back. He's the chief. It's their department. No one loved them or cared about them more than I did. And no one knows that better than Joe Faye. I think everything that's ever come for them, everything they've asked for since I've been here, you know, I've supported. So I don't care. Yes, I thought of her, and I said it, and that was the person who suggested to me, we're not going that way. All I care about is we do this. And I think the smartest and most effective thing for us to do right now is make the chief the harbor master, and then work it out. Let them work it out. However he bids it, whoever gets it, and to Katie's point, that whoever meets the -- why don't he get a job description? It's all done. It's approved by the personnel board. The only difference, because the way, the money and the stipend will be different than -- because there are a lot of stipend jobs there, as they both admitted to, there are a lot, will be different than -- you'll have to work that aspect of it out. And that's up to you. That's your job. But by making it the chief, it's done tonight.
Well, are we making it the chief? Are we giving Mike the -- are we giving Mike the -- are we delegating the authority to Mike to either to do that or to negotiate it with the unions? I mean, are we instructing Mike? Are we appointing the chief? Because it seems to me, we are the appointing authority. That's clear. We can delegate that to Mike, or we can appoint.
I think we are the appointing authority.
I thought we talked about delegating. Wasn't that what we talked about in June?
We voted to delegate it to Mike.
Actually, you know something?
We voted to delegate it to Mike.
We are the appointing authority. The town council did say that.
We are.
We are the appointing authority.
We delegated it to Mike.
This didn't get taken out. So I'm going to make a motion then, that we delegate to the town administrator to name the police chief as interim harbor master for now and then work it out.
Well, but that's not delegating. That's us deciding who it's going to be.
All right. Okay, so then I'll make -- correct it. I'll make a motion, name the police chief interim harbor master tonight. Anyone who wants to make a permanent harbor master, I'll take it as a friendly amendment, but...
Do we have to undo the other vote? Is my question?
We have to.
All right. So that motion hasn't been seconded. And...
Because you don't want to do that.
So we -- what's that?
You don't want to do that.
I don't want -- I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You don't want to do that.
Well, I just want to understand. I think Melinda's question is a good one. If we delegated it to Mike, we would have to take it back, right?
Do we? Okay.
I think we would, because we've delegated that authority to Mike, so now we would have to take it back.
The appointment authority.
The appointment authority, right? So, and I will tell you, my hesitation is, before we appointed the chief as the harbor master, I think we would probably want to have the chief in here to talk about that, you know, and see if the chief -- see if that makes sense to the chief. So I'm a little hesitant myself to do that. But anyway, the motion's been made, probably should be a friendly amendment to...
That's what I'm saying, just interim. I'm just saying interim. Make an interim harbor master for now, to put someone there.
Okay. So we would have to -- we would have to vote to -- I don't know if rescind is the right word. We would have to vote to take back the appointing authority from the town administrator. I think that's the first step, to Melinda's point.
I think, though, to my point, I think one of the things town council said was, that appointment had to come from us.
We delegated it to Mike by a vote in June. So, Melinda?
Thank you. So we have a meeting coming up on the second. Would that be...
You want to run the chief in?
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
Okay.
Fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'll rescind the motion.
I just think...
But that'll be the intention.
They'll be there for the town meeting anyway.
You think so?
And you two can work it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Item nine, discussion approval of the Milton Landing RFP. And I think we have voted on this before.
So we have a couple of changes. So I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the RFP, request for proposal for 25 Wall Street. There was some minor edits by the town council.
I see.
And those were circulated earlier.
Yes. Yeah. And it comes -- 10 is tied into it, that's why.
I think it was just one at the -- I just want to clarify that we -- in terms of the edit, there was just one at the very end about the pricing would be based on the best rent. Was this the only change? Price proposals will be evaluated based upon the total amount of rent that the town will receive over the term of the lease. Was that the only change?
I believe so.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
And then the map was updated.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Item 10.
I will speak to it.
So item 10, I can take it.
Yeah, you can speak to it.
So we jumped on a phone call last week. We thought we were ready to put this RFP out. Our esteemed friend, John Flynn, got on the call and informed us that when you put a piece of town property out for lease or for sale, you have to notify the Secretary of State, which involves a disposal motion, which is in front of you tonight. Additionally, then it has to be advertised in the register for 30 days, and also published in a local newspaper in two consecutive circulations. So we had hoped to have this out by this past Monday. Obviously, it's in front of you today, and we're probably looking with approval this evening to getting it out this time, maybe five weeks away, sometime in or around Christmas time. Might be better off to wait till after the New Year, but again, it's December now. Spring is going to be here before we know it. But I apologize for that hiccup. John caught this in the 11th hour. Himself and Kevin Freitag have been working on this diligently. So I appreciate that. It's just, in the absence of our Chief Procurement Officer, it's kind of wearing multiple hats here. And thankfully, John picked up on this. And there's a form to properly dispose of. That's the term they use.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to move that the select board issue a request for proposals to lease a portion of the town-owned property at 25 Wall Street, as recently revised, and declare said portion of that property available for disposition by lease.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Mr. Farrington?
What was that that you just mentioned? There's a formal -- there's a form?
There's a form that Secretary of State, Bill Galvin, makes the town file.
I see.
And then that has to be published in the register for 30 days.
Okay.
In addition to advertising in the local...
All right. So for two weeks, we've got to run it in the middle of time.
Correct. And for 30 days, it has to be at the state Secretary of State's on his register.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Back to item 13, Housing Committee Affordable Housing Trust. Ms. Collins?
I'll try to be quick. It's getting late. So the strategy section of the plan has been completed, and on December 9, the committee is going to go over it with Karen Sannerborg, our consultant. So we'll be then scheduling a hearing and follow-up, and we'll let you know about timeline for that. As far as the town farm feasibility study, we still don't have concepts ready yet from the architect, so we're waiting to see those. And the intent by the group is charged by the Governor's Stoughton Trustees is to put out an RFP, but there's still quite a bit of work to do before we could do anything like that. We are working with town council, the building inspector, and the TA on ancillary issues that we'd need to look at, including going to the Attorney General's office, what kind of traffic could be handled, and also how we can do public outreach that's effective and bring something really of value to the town. And so that's where we are on that. And Katie, if I miss anything, chime in, please. She's on the housing committee with me, so.
I think it's just for anyone who may not know what we're talking about in terms of a feasibility study, I think it's just important for the residents, especially the abutters and the neighborhoods right near them, to understand that -- we've talked about this before, it means, but that we're -- the housing trustees and the housing committees considering the town farm, remaining four acres, for potentially for affordable housing.
Right.
See, there's some kind of proposal that can be brought forward to help meet our unmet needs there as a potential site. But obviously, there's a lot of steps that you've outlined, and this board, as the trustees that have control over the four acres, would have a lot to say about that. So it's a proposal that a committee's working on to potentially bring to us, just in case people are unclear on it.
Yes. Yes. Thank you for the clarity. I appreciate it. Let's see. So Walcott Woods, we're having a meeting actually this Monday with Jack Dolly and Ned Corcoran, Northland's attorney, on this, just to look at what they've been doing and what they'd like to do. The units that Pulte produced at 199 Church Street figure into this, because the condo, the condominium aspect versus a rental or straight ownership, it can be an issue. So we'll be looking at that and some other things with them. So federal home loan funds are for starter homes, which are $300,000 and less. So you can imagine that we don't have any of those. But we're able to lend out those funds, and they come back to us. So we've made some money. We have about $164,000, which I believe in talking with our new assistant planner, Allison Quinn, today, we may actually have more than that coming to us. She's talked to Nate Robinson, who's the representative, he's in Quincy actually, for the South Shore Consortium. But we'll be looking at particularly other ways to use that money, because she believes that there are ways that we could do maybe a loan program or something. So we're hoping to leverage those funds. But until then, we continue to lend them out to other communities so that that money stays here in this area. Otherwise, it reverts back to the federal government. So, and you know block grants are hard to come by. So and then the last thing is a request by the housing committee to add one position to our makeup. We are -- would like to look for a resident by reaching out into the community in order to add a diverse perspective. We're really hoping for someone who has had experience of needing or having affordable housing, because we really believe that's a valuable perspective and, you know, a valuable part of our community too, as we try to grow, that we need that voice. So we don't necessarily vote on that, but we wanted to see how the board felt and...
Mr. Wells?
Will we increase in the housing committee or the affordable housing trust?
No, just the affordable -- just the housing committee. The affordable housing trust.
You both sit on it, or just you sit? You both sit on it?
We're both on the housing.
I'm on as the...
But she's on...
I think we're on it.
Four. So there's a representative from the select board, a representative from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust, that's Tom Callahan, and the planning board, Rich Beeler.
So you want general citizen watch?
Yes. That -- we feel that would be helpful. Lauren Massier, and now Bill Clark, they're -- so we have the -- someone, a staff member from the planning department on, but they're not voting. They're really our support and great guides. They've been really helpful. But we really feel that also having somebody to break a tie is good, but that's that diverse voice that we're really looking for.
Mr. Chair, could we put that on for a vote for the next meeting?
Yeah, we should. We should. So let's put that on for a vote for the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
And we could probably solicit, you know, people who are interested, and maybe make it, you know, increase the number and perhaps make an appointment if we have candidates.
Well, the housing committee and the affordable housing trustees, because we've all been meeting together, we're talking about trying to reach out both, well, through the select board, maybe even post things at the library, reach out into the PTO, because the PTO has such a large group of people who meet regularly and are very interested in town issues. So they have -- we have a bit of a plan. So I'm not sure we'd be able to get that together by then, but we'll see.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Melinda. Sounds like things are moving forward on that. Pardon me. Item 14, appointments to the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Julie D. Kramer of 58 Frothingham Street, Thomas Callahan of 16 Arnold Street, Philip Murphy of 1050 Canton Avenue, Frank Davis of 66 Valley Road, and our own Melinda Ray Collins of 525 Canton Avenue, as trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust through November 30, 2020.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 15, appointments to the youth task force.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Sean Roach of 11 Glendale Road, and Becky Pedera of 44 Allen Circle to Youth Task Force through November 2020. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. The only thing that I would add is that we may need to, in order to have two, I may need to step off because of, just because of the numbers. We'll have to check that. So if I need to step off because of the numbers, I'll just step off.
Send a lot of...
I'll step off, right? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 16, appointments to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
I'll move to reappoint Laura Beebe of 1514 Canton Avenue, Nancy Chisholm, 129 Gulliver Street, Kristen Kleiman, 99 Otis Street, Branch Lane of 85 Harland Street, Hagland Street, rather, Christine Paxia of 1072 Brush Hill Road, Jean Powers, 1372 Brush Hill Road, Carol Stocker, 291 Hillside Street, and Fred Taylor, 98 Gulliver Street, to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee to serve through November 2020.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 17, approval of the firefighter...
I have to recuse myself.
Oh, please. All right. This is the approval of the firefighter education credits for 2020. Ms. Dennehy, do you want to just take us through that very quickly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. This is an annual education credit that is paid to our dutiful firefighting staff for their education credits. Nothing has changed from FY19. We're currently in the middle of the beginning of a new contract year with them. So as it is, the credit per hour credit rate from FY19 carries forward until such a time as we negotiate going forward.
This is this amount, the amount, the total of $85,690, that's in the budget? It's already in the budget?
Yes, yep.
All right. Do we have a motion on this?
Oh, I move to approve $85,690 for this year 2020 fire department education incentives, which reflects a total of 1,072 credits, add $51.25 per credit.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item 18. This is the discussion approval of the senior tax work-off program for 2020. Ms. Dennehy, do you want to take this one as?
Yep, I have that, Mr. Chair. Thank you. It's that time of year again. I want to thank the 21 seniors who volunteered for last year's program. There are 25, there were and are 25 slots available. It's calendar year. There are some things you have to qualify for. You have to be 60 years old, maximum income of $45,000 for a single, or $60,000 for a two-person household. You'll need to submit a federal tax return for this. Basically, this is a program where seniors can mitigate some of their real estate taxes by volunteering hours at 12, 125 hours a year at $12 an hour. This board, last year, with the help of the treasurer and the board of assessors and our chief appraiser, up that annual amount from $750 to $1,500, which is very well appreciated. What you see is people greeting people at town hall, people greeting at our schools. Personally, it's a welcome addition to town hall. Each and every one of the members there, they show up. The bright smiling face that direct people who come into town hall looking for any type of government activity. So there are some questions that can be answered. It's actually run by Mary Ann Sullivan, who's Director of Council on Aging, and supported by office staff and the select board. So anyone that's interested or has any questions, now is the time. The enrollment period will start soon, and it's a calendar year. It's so we'd be looking for people to start in January of 2020. Again, the commitment's 125 hours with the focus on mitigating $1,500 of your real estate taxes. If there's any questions...
We had Ms. McMahon this year.
Yes, yeah.
And we also had...
Mary?
In June.
Yeah. We had so many people in town hall. It was great. And people work out of the Public Works Office. They work in many places in town government. So, and thanks to this board for upping the maximum amount that can be earned.
Did it help, I mean, Mary Ann's point last year was that she thought people weren't taking advantage of it as much, well, two things, the calendar year helped maybe, but also that the $1,500 was really what was needed.
Yeah, there were many, I think there were 14 slots filled the year before, and we had at least a third more filled this year. So the goal is to get 25, and it is on a first-come, first-serve basis for those that qualify. So you can reach out to my office, Christine Stanton in my office, or Mary Ann Sullivan here at the Council on Aging. But it's a great program.
Yeah. My mom worked at the DPW for several years, and they treated her great. She still brings some cupcakes once in a while, so I highly recommend it to people.
Yeah. I would get comments from people who were doing town business. When they were finished with their town business, they'd come into our office and thank us for having the greeters. It was -- it's a great addition to town hall.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the senior tax work-off program for the 2020 calendar year to begin January 4, 2020.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
I know, I'm looking at my watch.
That's all right. All those in favor?
I know, I'm looking at you.
I know, I know.
You're running out of minutes over here.
I know. All those in favor?
I'm running out of voices.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Future meeting dates. We have Monday, December 2, for town meeting, December 3, if necessary, and then our meeting's on December 4, which I will talk about on the 2nd and the 3rd, December 20, January 8, and January 22. We'll be back on our 2nd and 4th Wednesday schedule. Mr. Wells?
I have a conflict on the 4. Is there any chance we can just knock them both? If we do the 2nd and 3rd, can we eliminate the 4?
4th of December, yeah. We can, or perhaps we could move up our agenda for the 4th to the 3rd.
Okay.
Does that, does that work for people if we do that? We'll just need to make sure that we post a full agenda for that. We'll just need to make sure that we post a full agenda for that. Katie? Tony?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, Richard, so strike the 4th, and we'll hope that we don't have meeting... Town meeting on the 3rd, so we can have our full meeting, and if not, we'll deal with it.
Can I help you with that in a minute?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Item 21, the May Town Meeting Warrant Closing Date. And we have a suggestion of Friday, May 3rd to close the warrant. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to address this? And I guess my question is, if we're meeting on the 8th of the 22nd, would those be better dates to do it? So, maybe those don't work timewise, but perhaps you could fill us in.
Yeah, that would be fine. I just know, once we get into that season, it's a very fast-moving current.
Yep.
And with special Town Meeting taking place on the 2nd, Jennifer had put together a tentative schedule, and it's going to be a pretty fast schedule, understanding all that the Warrant Committee has already been through this year. But yeah, certainly, I think that's something we could take up in early December, understanding that, you know, article presentation, Select Board... If this board agrees, the Select Board would approve the articles for inclusion on Wednesday, January 22nd, which really isn't too far away.
Does that give you enough time if we do them on 22nd?
Yeah.
January 22nd?
Yeah.
That's pretty late.
So, we could move back to the 8th. We have a meeting on the 8th.
Yeah, I would think the 8th would be more reasonable than the 22nd.
Do you want to put it on the 20...
The Warrant Committee was asking for the schedule. That's the reason.
Yeah, absolutely. So, perhaps, why don't we set it the 8th and see? Because the suggestion here was the 3rd, so the 8th gives us a little more time. So, do you want to set it to the 8th and then see how we do?
Okay.
And then that gives the Warrant Committee...
It's usually early January. For their sake, the Warrant Committee is convenient.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jen. So...
I'll make a motion to approve... I'm just going to say January 8th, 2020 is the warrant closing date for May 2020 in Town Meeting. Is that okay?
Yep. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Item 22, One-Day Liquor Licenses.
Wow. I'll make a motion to approve one-day liquor licenses for the Ussus Estate for Christmas Tea on December 1st, December 10th, December 17th, and December 29th of 2019, and the Ussus Estate for Holiday Craft Night on December 3rd, 2019, the Ussus Estate for Christmas Cheers Event on December 8th and December 15th, 2019.
It continues on the next page.
Oh, oh, sorry. My God. The Ussus Estate for Christmas Cheers Event on December 22nd, the Ussus Estate, Forbes House Museum, Wakefield Estate for Merry Historic Milton Trolley Tour, and Progressive Tasting on December 13, 2019, Coleman &amp; Company for Holiday Shopping Night on November 21st, 2019.
Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Item 23, our Town Meeting Articles, whether we vote to support or not to support. We have two left that we haven't expressed an opinion on. Pardon me, one way or the other.
Mr. Chair?
Five. Yes, Mr. Wells?
I'll make a motion that we remove Article 5 pending our discussion and action tonight. Remove it from this Town Meeting for this one.
So, thank you, Mr. Wells. I don't know that we can remove it, but we can... We can move...
At the time, we'll move a Town Meeting to ask...
We can move to ask that it be sent back for further study. Okay. All right.
What you said.
Yeah, okay. So, I guess the motion would be, we'd move to, well, our motion would be that to express the board's view that this should be sent back for further study. Is that the appropriate motion?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll second that.
So, motion's been made in second.
Or whatever.
All is in...
Did you make the motion?
I made it. I made it. Yes. Somebody needs a second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Item 10, Article 10, this is the citizen petition on the speed limit. This, the Warrant Committee has voted not to recommend this, but there is some... I guess there has been some email traffic about an amendment at Town Meeting on this by the proponents. I don't know that it's been circulated. Ms. Collins?
It was, I believe, also discussed at the Warrant Committee meeting. Not that an amendment was drafted at the time. Is that correct?
Just their comments.
Right. But they... I... When I watched it, I thought that they were discussing how to actually present an amendment and that someone would have an amendment there for...
On the floor?
On the floor.
Ms. Collins?
Melinda, if you watch their meeting, is the discussion all around the issue of the word "direct" versus "authorized", or is it more than that? If I understood their comment, it was that they didn't think they could direct us to do something. But that's why I was hoping we'd have George Asher in tonight, because it'd be curious to see why they didn't just recommend that we be authorized to file the home rule petition.
I didn't... Oh, I... From what I remember, and you can correct me because you were there, but I didn't think that was the only issue.
Yeah, there was another one as to where the approach is, the distance of the approach. And I think Select Board Member Farrington mentioned it, you know. It's very hard to go from 45 to 20 at an intersection. So, what is... Is it a half-mile out becomes the approach? Is it, you know, 300 feet becomes the approach? I know they were struggling over what distance the approach to the intersection should fall. But it was primarily the difference between authorize and instruct.
So, I thought there were two things that they sent Alex Whiteside away with to come back with some sort of amendment for the floor and to work... Did they ask him to work with someone to identify?
I know Chair Asher has been working with Kevin Freitag, Town Counsel, on clarifying his comment to them. I don't know if it was taken up this Monday at the Warrant Committee's meeting. But I did also see, I didn't fully digest the email that had gone around from Mr. Whiteside, clarifying some of his issues.
So, maybe this is something we should just wait to see what happens at Town Meeting?
At Town Meeting? I'm filing that.
We have to do that.
I think that I've heard... Some of the feedback I've gotten from the state level is that the state would... May not even act, and they may just defer it right to the Mastard, because it's there. It's a Mastard Road. They may, even though we may, even if it were to pass a week's petition to do it, they may just defer it right to Mastard and not even act on it, because it's a Mastard Road. And DCI as well. You're talking two state agencies. You want to do that, then? You want to just wait till...
Yeah. Yeah, I think we just wait.
Can I just talk about...
Yeah, Mr. Wells?
Did we take a vote on establishing the associate member?
I think we did tonight. Yeah, I think we voted to support it tonight when Mr. Geis was...
Can I petition for reconsideration on that just for a second?
Sure. Sure.
So, I didn't realize we voted to support. Yeah, you're right, we did. There's a lot of pushback on this, particularly on East Milton, a ton of it. You may, some of you may have heard it. I just, I'm wondering if we could reconsider our vote and do the same thing, wait until we get there. I'd like to meet with some of these people that are against it and maybe come take a vote that night at Town Meeting if it would be possible for us to reconsider that and do that.
So, we can certainly reconsider it. Nothing precludes us from reconsidering it that night, you know. So, we could vote to rescind our vote tonight, or we could just vote to reconsider it. We could just vote that night to reconsider it.
So, I've never done this before. Can I make a motion to rescind our vote and then reconsider it that night at Town Meeting? I'd like to do this research. I'd like to do it, because I've gotten that much consternation about it.
Ms. Collins?
Can you shed some light on what the issue is, or...
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of concern about having a... And I've heard it. I was actually on a talk show. I listened to it on a talk show the other day, too, in another town, about having a non-elected member. And the Warrant Committee brought this up a little bit when we were there. I didn't really pay attention with that, Mike, because I hadn't heard anything on it. But since then, I've gotten a lot of concern. I got it at the Rotary the other day. I got it the other night. And then again, last night. People saying to me that they had some concerns about, particularly East Milton, we had the Falcone project. We're definitely going to have projects coming forward. I'd just like some time to vet this out and kind of hear this. I know there are some towns who have it, some towns who don't. Actually, I listened a lot. We're going to think had eight going at once. If the board went... I'll do... I'll let you tell whoever you'd like.
Do the people who are concerned about, do they know that there's a very limited circumstance in which it would be triggered?
I don't know. So, I don't... So, I want to...
I don't think they do.
You don't think they do? So...
I don't think that the people that are opposed to this understand that it's a very limited circumstance under which the alternate-appointed member would be cast into the vote.
What makes you think that?
Just from the feedback commentary.
Yeah, a lot of people don't. Even listening to the other town, this talk show, it was the other town. Same thing. It was like a lot of concern about something that's elected, having a non-elected person. And listen, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all they do. Listen, they do a lot of work. So, I think I want to make that motion, and I'll be glad that we vote again on the 3rd. You know, I'd like to make a motion to rescind our vote for tonight and then bring it up again on our first meeting on December 3rd, which is at the right, at the first meeting at Town Meeting?
December 2nd.
December 2nd. I'm sorry, December 2nd.
I guess my only concern about that is that now the Chair of the Planning Board isn't here to talk.
I'll call and tell her. I mean, I have no problem telling her. She's got to be here. I'm surprised she didn't say it to us. She's... I thought...
I haven't read any of it.
Oh, I have. Oh, it's out there. It's definitely out there. It was at Rotary the other day. It came up. That was first it came to me. And I was like, hmm. And I get that there is a point to something that's not... Look, we can't make a hollow master. It's not... It's not my job, and now we're talking about...
There was some opposition on that reason, for that reason, back in 2013, '14.
We tried this before?
Well, when the Town Government Study Committee put it forward, and then the Planning Board did not support it. That was one of the reasons back then. But this current Planning Board is supporting it. So, I mean, I guess there's no reason to... We don't necessarily have to rescind it tonight.
Actually, yeah, that's what I'll do.
We've taken a vote. We could reconsider it on the 2nd.
I withdraw that. Let's put it off the discussion and possible vote on the 3rd. How's that for Town Meeting? You all right for that?
We'll put it on the agenda for December 2nd. We'll put it on the agenda.
I feel better about that. Thank you.
And then I can also have conversation with the Chair.
Okay. That's great. And we'll post for an hour before Town Meeting, and so that we can have in whomever we... Whoever's willing to come and talk to us about that. Okay. All right. Item 24, Meeting Minutes, September 4th and September 25th, meeting minutes.
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 4th and September 25th, 2019.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and I have... Does anyone have any comments? I know, Jen, I had sent you comments. You got that comment. I had one additional comment. On the 25th minutes, I don't know that we need to mention the item that was deferred on the Eagle Scout. I don't know that we need to mention that. I would delete that, that we were going to... You know, the fact that he... The fact that the Eagle Scout didn't show up, I don't think we need to include that in minutes. I mean, I just don't think...
Oh, I got you.
I don't think it's necessary. So, I would delete those.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
That's all I have. Motion's been made in second and all is in favor?
Aye.
Item 25, we are finally there. The Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Couple of things quickly. When you announced the reappointments of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, it reminded me that Gene Powers announced to me that they have nominated Fred Taylor for their Thanks for Giving Award, which will be presented to him on Sunday. So, I want to thank every member of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, especially Fred. For those of you who don't know him, very tall, slender man who walks around town, usually taking inventory on the health and genesis of the trees in our town. So, one of the very active members of a very active committee in town. Chair Neely mentioned his appreciation for the volunteers in town. It is, single-handedly, one of the hottest-working committees in town, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. So, I echo Mr. Neely's support of people who volunteer in town government and that group, and in particular, Mr. Taylor, make volunteerism and Milton what it is. So, thanks to Mr. Taylor and thanks to everyone on the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Very quickly, we received a notification on Friday from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection that we will be receiving a grant, Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant, up to $246,000. This is for the 35-gallon carts that we chose. By choosing a cart that size with a recycled cart that's larger, you qualify for a grant because you're, in essence, promoting recycling. So, in the two years since Hillary Waite has been our Environmental Coordinator and Chase Berkeley has been our DPW Director, we've received $487,399 in grants. Mattress, we had, there was a mattress recycling initiative, and the recycled barrels that we rolled out last year, we received grant money for, and this year it's for the trash barrels. So, kudos to both of them and all the members of the Public Works team. That's found money, and it goes a long way in mitigating some of the costs to roll out these programs. So, thank you to them.
That's excellent news, and congratulations to the Town Administrator, too, for, I'm sure, having a role in that.
Yeah, it's nice getting that notification and see dollar signs with six numbers next to it.
Money talks.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone. Thanks to this board who supported all those initiatives.
So, if a resident wants a second recyclon or a second... So, if they get the second trash one, they just get billed twice on there?
Yes.
So, they do, they pay for two?
Unfortunately, it's not prorated. So, if you were to order a trash barrel today, you'd have to pay the $150.
For the rest of the year. So, if you want to order a second one, January is the time to do it.
July.
Oh, it's fiscal. Oh, yeah. Okay. What about the recycling one? Same thing?
Recycling, you can call it the...
And pay? Are they...
Public Works... No, that's free of charge.
It's free. Okay.
Yeah. I don't know how many they have left. I know there's more trash barrels left.
Ed O'Reson County told me he puts on four.
Yeah.
I'm like, wow, a big family puts on four. I was like, wow.
So, appreciate all that. Pleased to announce Christine Stanton as the next Director of the Council on Aging. Very arduous, bit lengthy of an interview process, but some very, very qualified candidates. I want to thank everyone that applied. It was a very, very deep talent pool. In announcing Christine, and I think we all know what Christine does in our office now for us. She's very excited to move over here. It's going to be a transition period of a couple of weeks. And then obviously, want to thank Mary Ann Sullivan tonight and at a later date for her years of service. Mary Ann was part of the selection committee as well. So, very excited to announce Christine. Want to thank Mary Ann in advance. She's still going to be here for a couple of months, doing everything she does every day for the seniors of our community. So, very good story all around.
Two questions. Well, first off, congratulations to Christine. That's a nice appointment. When does she begin?
So, she's going to start over here on December 9th. There's some personnel issues. One of the staffers here is taking vacation the last two weeks of December. So, to make the transition as smooth as possible for everyone, both the residents of this building and the people that the staffers that work here. She's going to basically mirror Mary Ann for a couple of weeks, and then Mary Ann, I believe, is leaving the first week in January.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good story all around. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Item 26, the Chair's Report. Just two things that have come in recently. One, we received notice, actually, I think after the agenda was set, that there is an application for 40B for the Ice House property. And so, that's something that's going to be coming on our agenda, I think, pretty quickly. And so, that's... We'll have to take a look at that and see what that involves, and we'll have to take a stand one way or the other, it seems to me, and to see where that goes.
Is that up to us when we decide? Do we put it on our agenda, or is there a...
We can comment on it if we so choose. I know in the past, boards have commented on it. Ms. Collins?
Yes, I happen to be talking to our planner today, and he did mention that that that's something that we would need to do to provide some direction for staff to look at it and make some determinations, so we would have to direct.
So, we'll get that on our agenda sooner rather than later. Mr. Wells?
I do believe, I know while I was Chair, you and I first met with them, and I believe you did as well. Did you meet with them as well?
Yes.
Then you did. And I believe that Cheryl and at least one of the other Planning Board may have met with them?
I met with Cheryl.
You met with Cheryl, and then April met with them as well?
April met with them. Correct.
Okay. Because that was what you and I had suggested, that like, look, we know how much work those neighbors put in to get the initial pool, and it's clear these developers have a different, want to go a different way. And I know that April, I talked to Kathleen, Rich, they all wanted to try and push that back in the direction. I know it doesn't look like, but I think there are some concessions that they're making.
I haven't taken a long look at it yet.
Yeah, I think we'll see.
I hope so. I hope so.
Just came in, so...
Mr. Chair, do we have a limited windows that we'd have to schedule something soon, which is holiday season, so it's...
We do. I... We do. I think, I think we're going to have to see if we have that on the agenda for the 3rd, for December 3rd. Yeah.
Before it goes to...
What's the comment to the financing agency?
Ms. Collins?
Right, right. So, so yes, that's what, that's what Bill Clark was asking. Could we put it on, well, he said the 2nd, but it sounds like we'll be meeting the 3rd, so that's probably good enough. And then, it will take the, the financing agency a little while to produce a letter, and then we have 30 days or 60 days from that?
To respond.
To respond. But we, we want to get ahead of it and, and see what it makes sense for town departments to look at as far as questions we have.
I want to make sure that the neighbors have, because those neighbors worked really hard.
Well, that's the, that was the reason to highlight it tonight, and let people know that that's, that that has just come in. So...
Okay.
Second thing, update on the Teen Center. There may be a delay, because some of the outside work has been delayed. So, we'll know more next week. It could be delayed a few weeks. We were hoping for early December opening, but that may be delayed a few weeks because of the, there's some work that needs to be done on the outside area for ADA purposes.
ADA compliance.
ADA compliance. So, so there may be a little bit of a delay on that, so we get that finished. And then, on the other side, the, the committee received, I think, 37 potential names from the Pierce Middle School students, and four have been selected as the finalists. So, the Pierce School students will be voting on the, from those four, voting on the name of the Teen Center. So, that will, we should, we may know that by next week, or, or we may, we, well, we will, we should know it. Well, I shouldn't say. I think, but I think we'll know by our next meeting what the name of the Teen Center is. So, that's all I have. Ms. Collins?
I was at the high school today, and I just wanted to thank everyone involved in having elected officials and others go around and hosting us in classes, and give a shout out to the wonderful job that our schools do, and our terrific students. I just had such a wonderful time talking with them and hearing from them about their great experience. So, thank you.
Mr. Farrington?
Nothing.
Ms. Collins?
No report.
Mr. Wells?
Let's go home.
Public comment response? Any public comment response? No. Item 29, any additional future agenda items other than what we've already discussed? Nope. Item 30, Community Happenings. On Thursday, November 21st, the Milton Historical Society has the Spirit of Christmas Past at the Milton Public Library at 7:00 PM. On Friday, November 22nd, the Milton Art Center is hosting, hosting, sorry, a comedy night with Christine Hurley at 8:00 PM. On Friday, November 22nd as well, there is a Holiday Shopping Night at the St. Agatha School from 5:00 to 9:00. So, you can go there before you go to the Milton Art Center. On Saturday, November 23rd, the Cardinal Cushing 5K is at the Cunningham School at 9:00 AM. Also, on the 23rd of November, on Saturday, the Milton Community Concerts at the First Parish Church is at 7:00 PM. And on Thursday, November 28th, which is Thanksgiving, it's the 18th Annual Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trout, Turkey, Turkey Trot, say that three times fast, Turkey Trot to Turn or Spond at 8:00 AM. Anything additional? All right. So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Hi. We'll call to order a meeting of the Governor Stoughton's trustees, and we have item 2 on the agenda, which is, bless you, the Men's Almshouse Winterization. We received a report from Mr. Prondak on that. Comments or questions about that?
I can't, I don't think I can open it. Let me see if I can open this. I got it. Okay.
So, just to report, I mean, I can do it, Mr. Dennehy can do it. Mr. Prondak inspected the buildings at the Governor Stoughton property. According to Mr. Prondak, our building inspector, he's satisfied that the men's house, so-called, the smaller of the two homes, which is not the pest house, is reasonably secure, but the main house needs boarding up to protect it from rain and snow. They have some quotes. He's reaching out to contractors for additional quotes for pricing on covering the roof with plastic tarps in order to protect it for, from the weather. So, I guess we'll, we'll look forward to getting a cost estimate on that.
Yes.
Mr.?
Just given the month we're at, I think we need to expedite this.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah, this is something that could be turned around at the next meeting, and boarded up within a day or two. There are 68 windows in that big building, and that's where the burden of most of the cost will fall, and that, and he has suggested topping the building to try to keep some of the, some of the wetness out of the building. But to your, to your point, Select Board Member McCollum, just to prohibit unauthorized entry and make sure that...
Was the, was the prior estimate around $12,000?
$12,000, yeah.
So, because of the time sensitivity, I agree with Richard on that. Can we authorize the Chair to approve up to $12,000? Obviously, Mr. Prondak's getting the cost estimates, but given the time in the, in the winter coming up, I'd like to authorize the Chair to approve up to $12,000 for this purpose.
I'll second it.
Ms. Collins, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Ms. Collins?
Well, that, that last, that was several years ago, that estimate?
No, that was in the fall.
That was in the fall? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only, and I think that makes sense. The only, I think it was a little bit north of 12, so you may want to authorize 13.
I'm just concerned if it, if it's a little higher.
And then the tarping as well.
Mr. Fr...
That did figure in the top.
Let's only make it 15.
15. It's a friendly amendment, 15.
15, okay.
Thank you.
Motion's been made in second. With the amendments, 15,000. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Hi. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Hi. We are adjourned. We will see you again at town meeting on Monday, December 2nd, and then our meeting may be here on Tuesday, December 3rd.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Absolutely.
Happy joyous Thanksgiving.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Town Hall will be closed all day?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Jen?